To the Bellevue City Council meeting for October 22, 2024. Before we begin the meeting, I'm going to give a few words about attending and participating in council meetings. Individuals not allowed to disrupt the meeting. This includes talking out of turn without permission, interrupting or making sounds when someone else is talking, approaching council members or city employees who are staffing the meeting. If a person disrupts the meeting, I will give a warning and the person's remaining comment time or ask the person to leave the meeting room for the rest of the meeting. My hope is that we can all express ourselves without name-calling, disparaging remarks, or taunting. And I do believe that most of us are capable of doing this, and so that's what I ask for tonight. Thank you so much. City Clerk, can we do the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malacutin. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Zon.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, could you lead us in the flag salute? Councilmember Lee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where religion stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
We have two proclamations tonight.
We have the Disability Employment Awareness Month proclamation that will be given by Councilmember Nguyen-House and received by Debbie Myers. And then we have the Filipino-American History Month proclamation, given by Councilmember Stokes and received by Sharon Gonzalez and her son Samwell. Let's start with the Disability Employment Awareness Month, and we will do the next one after, and then come back and do pictures. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Honored to read this proclamation this evening. Whereas more than one in four U.S. adults, or 61 million Americans, have some type of disability according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas October 2024 marks the 79th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions, talent, and value of America's workers with disabilities. And whereas people with disabilities continue to experience disproportionate instances of unemployment, of discrimination, of poverty, and economic instability. And whereas workplaces that welcome the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of successfully building inclusive communities and strong economies. And whereas the city of Bellevue embraces the diversity, culture, and contributions of many residents with disabilities in our schools, in government, in our workforce, and community by consistently and diligently working to make city employment, programs, services, and facilities accessible to people with disabilities. And whereas numerous organizations and city staff in Bellevue work with constituents and communities to develop programs and policies that encourage equity in hiring for people with disabilities. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, and on behalf of its city council, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in Bellevue, and urge all residents to support disability equity by recognizing the value and the contributions of people with disabilities in our workplaces and pledge to take steps throughout the year to recruit, to hire, to retain, to develop, and advance individuals with disabilities to foster full participation and economic self-sufficiency.
Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen-House. I know we have Debbie Myers, Executive Director of South King County Activities Center, Industries, and Employment Services, and you have two people with you, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robinson and councilmembers. It's an honor to accept the proclamation and acknowledge the city of Bellevue's commitment to disability employment and inclusive hiring practices for people with disabilities in your workforce. Again, I'm Debbie Myers. This is Erica Gilson and Andrea Benito, sorry, SCAC, employment consultants here at the city. This year's theme for National Disability Awareness Month is Access to Good Jobs for All. The city of Bellevue's commitment to supported employment sets this example for all businesses to provide access and see the value of including people with disabilities in their hiring. The unemployment rate for people with disabilities continues to be extremely high, even in times of low unemployment for the general population. We all know this is an untapped talent pool and hope that these proclamations and commitments to help people, more people with disabilities to be included and have access to good jobs. Thank you, city of Bellevue, for your continued commitment. They weren't able to be here with us tonight, but Ben and Jeff, who work in the Parks Department helping to maintain and support the Highland Center; Joseph, who works in Transportation Department on special projects and maintains the cleanliness of the kitchens and conference rooms; Jessie, who is working in HR completing filing and scanning projects; and Joe, who works in both IT and finance. He scrubs computers in IT and updates address changes for businesses. Joe is also a member of your Disability Advocacy Resource Team, DART, that meets on a monthly basis to discuss ways to create a more inclusive work environment here at the city. We look forward to our continued partnership in supporting employment opportunities for people with disabilities in your workforce. Again, thank you for your commitment to access for good jobs for all.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll call you back up for pictures after the next proclamation. Okay, and then we have Councilmember Stokes reading the Filipino-American History Month.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Guess I should turn that on. And I find this very fascinating about something you'll learn. Whereas Filipinos have lived in the United States for over 425 years, beginning with the earliest documentation proof of Filipino presence in the continental United States on October 18, 1587, in Morro Bay, California. The Philippines became an American territory in 1898, following the Spanish-American War. And whereas the first known Filipino in the Seattle area worked at the Port Bakely-Lakley Lumber Mill on Bainbridge Island in Washington Territory around 1883. And whereas Washington State is home to the third-largest Filipino population in the United States. And Filipino-Americans are the largest Asian-Pacific-American population in the state, with the vast majority calling King County home. And whereas in November 1903, the United States government passed the Pensionado Act providing funds for Filipino students to study in America. By 1912, 209 Filipino students had graduated from American college or university programs. The University of Washington enrolled the highest number of Filipinos of any institution in the United States. And Filipino-Americans have lived and worked in Bellevue for decades, contributing to our city's growth, vibrancy, economy. And whereas Filipino-American Month provides an opportunity to promote the study of Filipino-American history and culture and recognizes the contributions made by Filipino-Americans. And whereas today, as leaders, business owners, and workers across industries, Filipino-Americans enhance Bellevue's community and culture. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Filipino-American History Month in Bellevue, and urges all community members to celebrate the history and contributions of Filipino-Americans to the Bellevue community.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Stokes. We have Sharon Gonzalez and your son Samwell.
Mabuhay, and good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Filipino-American community, it is with deep gratitude and pride that I accept this proclamation from the city of Bellevue, recognizing October as the Filipino-American History Month. We are incredibly honored by this acknowledgement, as it reflects not only the growing presence of Filipinos in Bellevue and across the nation, but also the rich history and significant contributions we've made to American society for over four centuries. From the earliest Filipino deckhands who landed at Morro Bay, to the immigrants who worked the fields and canneries, to the generations that have since excelled in education, healthcare, the arts, and public service, we are proud to be part of the vibrant fabric of this city and this country. This proclamation is a meaningful step in ensuring that our stories and our heritage are seen, heard, and celebrated, not just by our own culture or community, but by the broader society we are all part of. While we celebrate this milestone, we also recognize that there is still much work to be done in fully embracing the narratives of all people of color in our communities. We are committed to fostering dialogue, unity, and understanding, and we look forward to working hand-in-hand with the city of Bellevue to build an even more inclusive and equitable future. It reminds us of the importance of visibility and representation, and that Filipino-American history is American history. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Mayor Robinson and the men and women who make up the Bellevue City Council for this recognition. Together, we continue to work toward a future where diversity is cherished and every voice is valued. Maraming salamat po. Thank you, at mabuhay tayong lahat.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's do picture with you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up, we have oral communications. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are eight pre-registered speakers on tonight's list, so before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So the total time for oral communications is for a period not to exceed 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to city of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The presiding officer is authorized in both of those categories to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on items that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed to speak up to three minutes, and a maximum of three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker. Actually, there are two people coming up to share their three-minute time slot, and that's Brady Nordstrom and Sahar Aminie.
My name is Brady Nordstrom, and I work at Housing Development Consortium.
Good evening. My name is Sahar Aminie, and I am the Advocacy and Policy Manager at Habitat for Humanity. We are here as representatives of the Eastside Affordable Housing Coalition, a policy and advocacy group that brings together over 30 local nonprofit and community organizations committed to accelerating development and preservation of affordable homes throughout the east side, including here in Bellevue. Tonight, we want to express our support for the Bellevue Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. This plan is culmination of years of effort by the city staff, community members, and leaders from both the city council and the planning commission. It outlines a forward-thinking, ambitious vision for affordable housing in Bellevue. We believe Bellevue should be proud of the broad engagement work and technical analysis that so clearly informed this plan and sets the city on a strong path towards a more affordable and inclusive future. I'll turn it over to Brady now.
Thank you so much. And in particular, I just wanted to name a few of those things that we really appreciate. So in the future land use map, there's bold residential capacity, especially near job centers, an opportunity. This makes Bellevue more accessible to the people that contribute work and play here. There's also an emphasis on mixed-use transit-oriented development, especially in a way that leverages the generational investments in light rail and other multimodal transportation, faithful middle housing implementation. And then, we also thank you for strong policies, and these set the vision that focuses on some of the things that Sahar was just saying: increasing affordable housing production through code and programs, exploring new revenue tools for affordable housing, supporting homeownership, anti-displacement, and then improving inclusion. And there's things in there as well about undoing the impact of inequities of the past in housing. So your vote tonight on the final confirmation of this plan is a big positive step forward for Bellevue. And even with all this said, implementation is ultimately what matters, so there's a lot of vital work ahead, and I think we would just leave you by inviting you to stay engaged with the Eastside Affordable Housing Coalition and all the community partners that are out there as we collaborate to really bring this into reality. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Braun, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Braun, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and City Leaders. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of People for Climate Action. When Bellevue leaders wisely joined K4C in 2012, it was with full knowledge that greenhouse gas emissions, if unaddressed, would wreak climate havoc. With one clear culprit: burning fossil fuels, Bellevue made critical commitments to lower these emissions by 50% by 2030 and 80% by 2050. Most of you were on the council that renewed these commitments in 2019, and several of you have since campaigned on keeping these commitments. It's now 12 years later, and we have five years to do the deadline number one, which must be reached to make deadline number two. Two of those five years are covered by this budget cycle, and as of today, indications are Bellevue's local emissions are increasing, not decreasing, post-COVID. Bellevue's responsibility is well-understood. We know we must address our locally-generated greenhouse gas emissions from burning fossil fuels in our currently existing buildings and transportation. While we do greatly appreciate and thank you for the leadership to focus the city on a greener future, including the comp plan, the Wilburton-Luca, and hiring an outstanding ESI team, continued bold action is needed to enable the ESI team to effectively ramp up impactful programs needed to address our locally-generated emissions. The city's most recent emissions inventory shows existing buildings account for 49% of the problem. The city has provided energy efficiency consulting to large building owners who are mandated to green up by the state. Our local responsibility is to allocate enough funding to meaningfully reduce emissions in our existing single-family homes, multifamily homes, and small commercial buildings. Objectives of these programs must include housing affordability and equity by providing significant educational guidance, incentives, and other aid to building owners, especially those of more modest means. PCA prepared and presented to you a minimum ESI budget proposal based on available Bellevue data. We know we need to spend at least an additional $10 million a year to have a credible plan. The additional funding is needed to scale up the Energy Smart Eastside program and develop similar programs for multifamily and small commercial buildings, and to increase cross-town zero-emissions metro service for those who cannot afford EVs. Meeting Bellevue's locally-generated emissions commitments cannot be discretionary; rather, it is a fundamental responsibility to protect the safety and health of our residents and should be treated as a fiduciary duty. As such, we respectfully urge the council to prioritize and continue to take bold action on climate funding. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Leila Dow.
Hello. My name is Leila Dow, and I'm a 14-year-old freshman at Innerlake High School. And I've been attending Boys and Girls Club since I was in third grade. From the time that I joined the club, I knew it was a place that I could depend on. It helped me mature, advocate for myself and peers, find my voice, and explore new opportunities with friends. During the pandemic, when everything felt uncertain, the club remained a constant. When school moved to remote learning, the club kept its doors open for 75 weeks straight. It allowed me to build a strong sense of belonging while at the club and socialize with my friends in person when many others had to do it digitally. I've been fortunate enough for the club to provide me with the opportunity to travel to Washington, D.C. twice to advocate and meet with our state senators and representatives. Through that, I have found a passion for our club's keystone group, which focuses on leadership, community service, and advocacy. This past summer, I helped host our club's Move for Love event at our Lake Hills Clubhouse, which was a bike ride throughout Bellevue to raise awareness around the importance of healthy relationships and knowing the signs of unhealthy relationships and domestic violence. And with Boys and Girls Club, I have a community, and I feel like I belong. So I ask you today to keep Boys and Girls Clubs above you in mind as you make your funding decisions for the next budget cycle, because there are thousands of kids like me who need the Boys and Girls Clubs above you in their lives. Many of the kids who go there really would have no other place to go outside of school. My site directors, Carlos and Lance, make sure we are safe and productive when we are with them. Being a teen is hard, but the Boys and Girls Club helps not only me, but also my busy family. Us Bellevue kids need the Boys and Girls Clubs. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is April Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malacutin, and councilmembers and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is April Stevens. I'm a resident of Bellevue, and I'm speaking as a community member and a volunteer for People for Climate Action. Let me start by saying thank you. Thank you for all your services to our city, and thank you particularly for your efforts that you have made to implement actions through the Sustainable Bellevue Environmental Stewardship Plan. It is encouraging to see that the draft budget does propose a continuation of robust efforts to reduce the city government's greenhouse gas emissions. We also applaud your focus on making Bellevue more affordable and in creating more equity. We believe the program proposals and relevant budget requests that we've discussed with you would help to address this goal and improve the housing affordability in Bellevue. Our budget proposals also support the city's efforts in honoring the climate commitments the council has continually made. 90% of our budget request focuses on cutting greenhouse gas emissions from existing buildings and lowering costs for low- and middle-income families. Our concern is with the existing building stock, particularly small businesses, single-family residences, and smaller multifamily units. By providing financial assistance in the way of grants, incentives, and/or low-rate loans for modest-income building owners, the cost to transition to a cleaner, more sustainable future, a cost that traditionally is passed along to the consumer, would be lowered. Moreover, the renter or low-income homebuyer also receives the benefit of lower energy costs for their dwelling. As you know, the owners of larger buildings, over 20,000 square feet, already receive assistance through the Clean Buildings Incentive Program in the form of consulting aid, enabling them to comply with the Washington State Building Energy Performance Requirements. Our proposal delivers equity by providing assistance to the owners of smaller buildings under 20,000 square feet as well. The increased funding to the notable key program, Energy Smart Eastside, would also address our locally-generated greenhouse gas emissions, along with supporting more affordability. By including all of our proposals to the city budget, the city would not only meet its 2030 and 2050 reduced greenhouse gas emission commitments, but also improve the affordability of living in Bellevue, especially for our modest-income folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Bannon.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malacutin, and city councilmembers. My name is Patrick Bannon, and I am president and CEO of the Bellevue Downtown Association. But I'm here tonight as co-chair of the Friends of the Grand Connection. My chair, Pearl Lung, co-chair, Pearl Lung, is in the audience, along with many other members of the Friends, if they could just wave. We are here to show our strong support for the Grand Connection crossing and the work that has been done. And many of us, including several of you, city staff, made a trek to New York City as part of the BDA's annual study tour. There, we had an opportunity to tour the High Line and to learn all about how they made that project a reality. The lessons they learned along the way, the things they wished they had done differently, things that are working well, and how they maintain it and activate it throughout the year. We had the opportunity to see with our own eyes just how transformative that project has been to the city and the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's what our hopes and dreams are for the Grand Connection crossing, as it connects across downtown from City Hall Plaza to East Rail. We see this crossing unlocking the development in Wilburton. We see the community gathering and placemaking opportunities it will provide. We are excited about how the crossing integrates with the nodes at 112th and 116th, and what will happen on the two city-owned sites, and how this all supports a vision for a new district in Bellevue, one that is linked with a safe and comfortable crossing for pedestrians and cyclists who want to come downtown from East Rail and vice versa. And we are also super excited about the potential integration of the project with private development on either side of the freeway. Just last week, we met again with the folks at KG Investment Properties to talk about their latest plans for their site, how that will connect to the crossing, and how it will completely transform the east side of 405. Just like the High Line was for New York, the crossing will be transformative for Bellevue, and we are delighted to see it moving forward and the initial concepts coming out of the 30% design work. We, the Friends of the Grand Connection, stand ready to continue serving as advocates for the project in the community, as friends and fundraising partners, and as partners with city staff and council moving forward as we further the design and ultimately move into construction. So thank you for your time and efforts and staff's work on this amazing project. Thanks too to those of you who could join us in New York City. We have big dreams ahead, and we are thrilled to continue working on this very exciting project for Bellevue. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vida Grace Cabanilla.
Hi, I'm Vida Grace Azuro Cabanilla, an intern at the Filipino-American National Historical Society and a Bellevue resident. My family is one of the oldest Filipino families in Washington, coming here in the 1920s, making me a fifth-generation Filipino. Thank you for proclaiming today as Filipino-American History Month and recognizing us, not only in Bellevue, but also recognized by U.S. Congress and by Governor Inslee. My family is one of the 61% of American-born Filipinos in Washington, with the overall population of Filipinos being almost 76,000 in King County and around 184,000 in Washington State, making up estimated 9,000 residents in Bellevue. On May 7 of 2019, Governor Jay Inslee signed into law Senate Bill 5865, recognizing Filipino-American History Month, not just being now celebrated across the state, but the entire country, with yesterday being celebrated at the White House, a high honor. The month commemorates the arrival of Filipino-Americans in Morro Bay, California on October 18, 1587, making us the oldest living minority group in the United States, thanks to the efforts of my aunt and late uncle Dorothy and Fred Cordova with the organization, the Filipino-American National Historical Society, which helped establish the observance of this month in 1991, making this the 32nd Filipino-American History Month. This month is meant to recognize the accomplishments in our time here as Americans. One of the lesser-known facts here in Washington is that my great-grand uncle, Pio decano, made history as the very first person of color to own land in Washington State. My goal as an intern is to document, preserve, and disseminate the histories of other Filipino families with their accomplishments, big or small, not just this month, but every day of the year. So thank you all here in Bellevue for your support. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Devon Cabanilla.
I come bearing gifts. I have coloring books, and I represent multiple groups. I'm also a member of I'm also a member of the Filipino-American National Historical Society. I'm also on the committee for Make Us Visible Washington, which is actually based here in Bellevue. We are seeking to create legislation statewide to make Asian-American history at large a requirement in our education. As my daughter mentioned, we have a very long history here. Pio de Cano was our grand uncle. He was the first Asian-American allowed to own land in Washington State, and you can find that in the Supreme Court case, De Cano versus Washington. He bought a house in Leshi. He was offered land on Mercer Island and didn't want to take it because he didn't want to use a boat. There was no I-90 before, so that's how long we've been here, and that's why we live in Bellevue now instead of Mercer Island. So, I'm also an East Gate resident. My children attend Bellevue Public Schools. And I just want to underline, as a parent and also as a community member, that the proclamation you've raised is not just a token demonstration. There's a direct line to the things that our people and relatives have done. His ownership of land as the first Asian immigrant has helped diversify Bellevue. There's a direct line between that instance in 1941 to today in 2024. So, the strong emphasis on our shared history is one thing that I like to underline, that the things that we have done are also American history. And the diversity that Bellevue celebrates and experiences today with all its various residences is even higher than Seattle's today, arguably. And that is a direct benefit of all of the contributions that immigrants and citizens alike make. So, thank you very much. Make Us Visible again is based here in Bellevue, and I'm also a member of the Filipino-American National Historical Society as well. You can get our coloring books for free at makusvisible.org, and I've shamelessly put my uncle as the centerfold in one of the books, but I'll hand these off to you to the side here, and feel free to take them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker on our pre-registered list is Tim Motts.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, council members, and city staff. I'd like to recognize the incredible Boys and Girls Club families that have joined us this evening. Please raise your hand. I know it's a busy time of night, and for you all to come out from the Lake Hills corridor to the meeting means a lot to all of us here. My name is Tim Motts, and I am the president and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Bellevue. I'm here tonight to thank you for your bold and necessary action to provide additional funding in the Human Services Budget for our community's most vital resource, Bellevue's youth. Our entire sector deeply appreciates the support and partnership we've received thus far, but as the largest provider of after-school services for the school-aged children of Bellevue, I must share that the challenges facing the thousands of Bellevue families, some of which are here tonight we serve, continue to escalate, and we cannot meet these growing needs without the increased investment. As you all know, the demand for affordable, quality childcare has surged dramatically in Bellevue. In the past five years alone, our scholarship program has gone from $900,000 in 2019 to a distribution of over $2.5 million by this year's end. Despite this, we still have families on our waitlist, families who are struggling to find care for their children while they work or pursue education. This is not a luxury, it's a necessity, especially for single-parent households and those living at or below the poverty line. Your additional investment in the club will go directly to the families who need it most in Bellevue, with an emphasis in our five clubhouses in the Lake Hills community. The 16,000-plus youth we serve, 75% of whom are Black, Brown, or other form of historically marginalized communities, are facing unprecedented challenges, and these funds will allow us to provide scholarships to each and every family that is currently on our waitlist due to inability to pay. As the current elected president of the Boys and Girls Clubs throughout Washington, I'm proud to share that we recently commissioned a statewide study that demonstrated that for every dollar invested in a club, the community receives back $7.20 in direct benefit. That is because clubs enable families who need us most to have access to free or affordable childcare, thus allowing parents to work. Clubs provide meals, which lower monthly grocery bills with skyrocketing inflation. And the thing that probably doesn't get talked about most is the bottom line, where there's a Boys and Girls Club, there's less juvenile crime and less juvenile incarceration. I understand that resources are limited and that you must make difficult decisions, but I do urge the council to consider the long-term impact of fully funding prevention programs like the Boys and Girls Club. Simply put, by increasing youth funding in the Human Services Budget, you are directly investing in the futures of the children of Bellevue who need us most and are helping to close the opportunity gap, which creates a more equitable and ultimately a safer Bellevue. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That is the end of our pre-registered list, so I'd ask at this point, because we do still have a few minutes, if there's anyone else joining us tonight who would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand, and that includes those online. Do you have one hand online? Melanie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you so much.
If you could state your full name for the record, and then you can start. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My name's Melanie Four. I'm a Community Impact Manager at Upwards, and on behalf of the Boost team, we wanted to thank Donna Adair, the Human Services Commission, and the city council members for your past support and advocate for continued support of Bellevue's in-home daycares and working families. I'm pleased to share the inaugural year of the Boost programs underway and already a huge success. With the support of the city and the CDBG funding, our dedicated Boost team is supporting 23 home daycares in Bellevue and has helped over 250 families find quality care. So far, 30% of the participating daycares have reported increased revenue well ahead of schedule, and with the help of the Boost team, the daycare owners have created seven new teaching assistant positions. These providers will receive a teacher assistant subsidy of $800 per hire from now until the end of the year to help offset the cost of payroll and new hire expenses. But there's still more work to be done. There's over 90 home daycares not operating at a sustainable level, and meanwhile, a capacity gap of over 2,300 childcare slots. We're grateful for the opportunity to build on the momentum of the pilot year and amplify the impact of the program. With your support, we have the potential to bolster dozens more daycares, creating new teaching assistant positions, and help serve hundreds more working families in Bellevue. Our 12-month Boost program empowers childcare providers to sustain their businesses long term. It's built on the philosophy of teaching a woman a fish, equipping them with the skills and resources to thrive on their own well beyond the end of the grant period. With your support, the Boost expansion will make a meaningful difference for families in Bellevue, ensuring children get quality care and parents can get to work. Thank you again for considering the critical need for childcare in Bellevue and for supporting the vital daycare providers who dedicate their lives to our children and shaping our future generation. Thank you.
Thank you. One more time for a hand. We have time for one more speaker. I see no additional hands, mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have two ordinances tonight. I'll ask the city manager to introduce them.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is a very big night for the team who's coming up tonight, and we gave them the benefit of coming early instead of waiting to the end of the meeting to celebrate this. The two ordinances in front of you, first is the Bell Red Look Forward, which is a comprehensive plan amendment, and then the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Council provided direction to bring these forward for final action tonight, and as you heard from the commenters today, the process has involved extensive community engagement, hours and hours and hours of work by the Planning Commission, and the council review and direction as well. And then I have to give commendation to the staff. So, Emil King, our Director of Community Development, Tara Johnson, our Planning Director, led a very large team of staff throughout this entire process, and we had lots of staff involved in creating this and getting it to the final step here. So, this is also a big night for this council, setting the vision for this community for the next 20 years. And thank you, and we're asking for your consideration to move forward and adopt the ordinances as proposed tonight. With that, I'll turn it over to Emil.
Thank you for the introduction, city manager Carlson, and good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and members of council. In your packet tonight is the final ordinance for the Bell Red Look Forward for your consideration. It amends the Bell Red Subarea Plan and future land use map that are contained in the comprehensive The current Bell Red plan was adopted back in 2009 and has guided significant development in new urban neighborhoods we have in that subarea over the past 15 years. The work that we've done over the past two and a half years have taken a good plan and made it even better. The area is served by four light rail stations and has significant potential for additional growth. The update refines the policies in the plan and helps advance future work on code amendments, park improvements, the Bell Red Arts District, multimodal access and walkability, and stream enhancements. And finally, I'd like to thank the community for their engagement during the process, the Planning Commission and other boards and commissions for review and their recommendations, and finally, the council for your guidance along the way. So, with that, we would like to ask for your consideration of the final ordinance for the Bell Red Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Great. So, this is, have you been before us three times, or is this the third time? Can't remember.
Yeah, this is the third time.
This is the third time, and this is final action. There's probably not a whole lot to say since we've been all through this, but anybody who wants to comment or has a question before we approve or take final action on this is welcome to Councilmember Stokes.
No, thank you, mayor. This is very exciting for a whole lot of things, and we've been working on this, and several of us on the council since 2012, a little before. And one of the monumental things we did going forward was trying to push Bell Red and, you know, bring it to the future. And it was a long process on that, and we had a little thing, we called it the Bell, let's do the Bell Red Look Back. And so, one day I said, wait a minute, this calls the Bellevue Look Forward, because that's where we need to go. And we all knew that, and we all worked on that. I just wanted to commend the staff on all these years, and particularly these last few years in the leadership of putting this thing together. This is going to monumentally change in a very, very positive way Bellevue, and particularly the area here. So, this is exciting. We've all been working on this together. This has been a very collaborative, cohesive, that doesn't mean we don't have and had arguments and worked on things and everything else, but, and figure out how the heck we're going to fund this, but this is just monumental, and I'm really, really pleased to be a part of this. So, you know, this is something that will actually make Bellevue go forward, as it should be, and, you know, it's Wilberton and Bell Red, but it's going to have a great impact on a lot of the places in the city as well. So, this is building the new Bellevue for the future. So, I'm ready to go, I'm ready to vote for this, and again, just appreciate so much the work that the staff has done, and this council, and people in the community. It takes all of these to do it, and all you people out here in the community who've worked on this, thank you very much. You've helped us move forward, so I'm ready to go, mayor.
Would you like to make the motion?
Sure.
And I will open it up to more comments or questions that they might.
Okay, where is it? Right here, okay. All right, I move to adopt ordinance 6810, adopting the 2024 Bell Red Look Forward Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan pursuant to the Growth Management Act.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, the one thing that I will say is I love that we, we used to call it the Look Back, and Jim McHeckren said it's a Look Forward, and he's somebody who's been so involved in so many projects in our city over the years, and I love that we adopted that forward-thinking, so thank you.
I got that from you.
Good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. So, what's our next one?
Emil, go right ahead.
We'll just bring up the next slideshow. So, this is a major milestone tonight. We are bringing forward the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, and in your packet is the ordinance for the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update for your consideration, and it amends the general elements of the Comprehensive Plan as well as the subarea plans to be consistent with state law, and this is an effort that occurs once every 10 years. So, this is a big deal, and this has been a significant effort for the city. I do want to note briefly in your desk packet, we've noted one mapping correction. This is from your September 24th discussion for the East Gate area. The mapping software was not cooperating, now it is, so no additional discussion is needed tonight, and we'll make sure the final executed ordinance does take care of that map correction.
Good evening. We just want to highlight a few things that the plan includes. So, as you know, Bellevue is required to go through this process every 10 years and plan for 20 years of forecasted growth. So, significant component of the plan is planning for 35,000 housing units, 70,000 jobs. Bellevue and the region have experienced a significant amount of growth since our last update in 2015, and so this update really reflects important changes to the city and the community. It also reflects changes under Vision 2050 and regional and state requirements, as well as countywide planning policies. We also undertook extensive engagement with the community. Bellevue 2044, which is our engagement approach called Building a Liveable City for All, was the city's call to action for the community to be involved in the periodic update. Over the past two and a half years, our planning team worked very closely with the community to identify development priorities, address key challenges, tackle the need for more housing and center equity. As you may recall, at the launch in early 2022, as directed by council, we really have planned for additional housing capacity primarily in our Wilberton area, as well as around our Bell Red transit-oriented areas as well, and some additional density also in some of our mixed-use areas like Crossroads and Factoria. We also have a strong focus on equity, particularly with changes to both the community engagement element and the housing element. Key updates in the housing element included applying an equity lens. Climate change and sustainability are also integral components of the plan, including planning for resiliency, expanding, and furthering the environmental stewardship initiative, as well as planning for climate change.
So, just to wrap up, I again want to, on behalf of staff, thank the community for their significant engagement in this process. It was essential for a successful planning effort. The boards and commissions did a lot of work to review all the elements, take into account the public comment, and really deliver a plan that the city can be proud of. And then finally, the council for your guidance along the way. We've had a number of touchpoints over the past two and a half years, and we're now at the point where we can adopt this and then move on with implementation. So, at this point, I'd like to formally ask for your consideration of the final ordinance for the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, mayor.
This is a simple action, but it's the culmination of a lot, lot of work, and I just want to commend staff and the community and the council and the boards and commissions for all the work that they have done on this. This is, kind of doesn't show in this little action we're taking, but this is just a tremendous move forward, so I'm excited. Let's start with deputy mayor.
Thank you, mayor. I am here to throw some numbers to maybe bring this effort to the picture for our audience. We are talking about February 22. We are talking about 30 months of work. We are talking about 78 community events. We are talking about 26 meetings just for Planning Commission, and in all of those meetings, of course, we have all of the stakeholders come and share their opinion and their thoughtful comments with us. It is a very big milestone, and I think we should acknowledge that. It is, these updates lays a strong visionary policy. It is, these updates lays a strong visionary policy that is going to be the foundation that guide our city all the way through to 2044. It is a, this update is a significant revision to Bellevue's comprehensive plan since the Growth Management Act came to in play in 1991. So the scope of work is amazing and is incredible, reflects the dedication, engagement, and collaboration of so many, from Emil King, Tara Jensen, and we call it One City, One Effort, this body, all of the boards and commission, and of course, all of our amazing stakeholders that we have in Bellevue. On that note, I'm going to make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance 6811, adopting the citywide 2024, 2044 Comprehensive Plan periodic update for the city of Bellevue pursuant to the Growth Management Act, and amending volume one and two of the Comprehensive Plan consistent with the GMA and the King County, Countywide Planning Policies.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Open champagne, please.
Can we take a champagne break?
No champagne.
Okay, we have--
We'll have a celebration later.
What's that?
We'll celebrate later.
Okay, all right. Thank you, City Manager.
With you all.
So we have, onto our study session items, we have three. Go ahead and let's introduce these.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So since this next, this first study session item, 11A, is the Grand Connection Crossing update. And since late 2022, staff has been working with members of the community to advance the design of the Grand Connection Crossing. This is a one-half mile crossing connecting City Hall Plaza with East Rail across I-405. And tonight, staff is here to provide an update on the work on this project. We have from Community Development, Jesse Canedo, our Chief Economic Development Officer, Anthony Gill, our Grand Connection Manager, and then Maher Waleha, Assistant Director of Capital Projects and Transportation. And with that, I will turn it over to Jesse to kick off the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council. We are looking very forward to tonight's presentation. As the City Manager mentioned, staff and stakeholders are excited about all the project progress that we have made since June. So we wanted to take an opportunity for an informational update as we get ready to close out 30% design and make sure we answer questions about some of the design and engineering choices that are being made to make sure that we deliver this project as fast as possible and make this a great space for our Bellevue residents, workers, learners, and visitors. So with that, Anthony will walk us through the agenda.
Yeah, so tonight we'll remind you of how this effort began in earnest about a year and a half ago. Give some updates on the project's schedule and engagement process. And most excitingly, we will update you on where the 30% design stands and share some renderings with you. We also have some important information to share about our evaluation of delivery method options, funding development, and our work to evaluate future uses of city-owned properties along the route. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Maher.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening. And just want to start with really good news. We're making really great progress on the design effort, reaching 30% by the end of this year. And just a reminder, this effort, the current effort, is funded by 50/50 with the City of Bellevue and our partner, Amazon. And throughout this process, throughout this year, we've been really privileged to have the great support of the community stakeholders and the Friends of the Connections. And as we are approaching the end of the year here, delivering 30%, we already start thinking, what is next, next step? So, next slide, please. This is just overall a schedule. As Anthony mentioned, we started about a year ago, and we really had a great progress. And thanks you for, to all the community members who joined us in a number of open houses. Early in the year, we had online open house, in-person open house as we went through alternative analysis. And then we did, with the help of our consultant, a study to define the type and the size and the location of that crossing. And currently, I'm happy to let everybody know, everyone to know that we have an online open house that is going on. It started this last week, and it's going to continue toward the end of the month. I encourage everyone to go ahead and join us in that online open house. You can go through Bellevue.gov/I405Crossing or engagingbellview.com and give us your thought and opinion. And really, this open house is, it demonstrates and the reflection of the community input into the process. A lot of the elements you will see in some of the graphics, which Anthony will share with us here too. It's a really reflection of the community's input into the process. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Jesse to talk about the design trade-offs.
Yes, thank you, Maher. The council and the community may remember this visual from our last presentation in June where we started talking about some of the different opportunities and choices that we would have to make as we move forward to deliver the crossing. The points intention were the 405 Master Plan, opening the crossing as quickly as possible, making sure that it is affordable and doable, preserving the opportunity to develop a park lid over the highway in the future, thinking about integrated redevelopment, and then the idea of a iconic structure that would be a landmark for the city. The council gave us a great feedback during that last presentation. One of the key pieces was continue to deliver as quickly as possible. And then from the open houses and community engagement, we heard a lot from the public about making sure that the spaces were well-designed, were welcoming, and usable. And WSP took that feedback in earnest. And the design that we're going to walk through tonight, we believe optimizes five of the six choices that were presented during our last presentation. The only one that we de-optimized, because it was the one that unlocked everything else, was the iconic structure. Because of the placement of the crossing right next to the sound transit guideway, and because of the future lid that we may opt to build, the iconic structure was going to be a heavy expense for very little return in terms of visual impact over the next few years. So the WSP designs that we're going to go through tonight really do kind of optimize as much as possible the opportunity to open quickly, deliver, continue to deliver the 405 Master Plan, and preserve future opportunities. Those choices were also reinforced by the recent BDA study tour, which went to study the High Line in New York. The BDA took 50 regional stakeholders, and there were a lot of learnings that really told us that we are on, we're in the right direction. So the High Line in New York has been an iterative development since it first opened in 2009. It's been a series of continuous improvements that have added more usable public space, better plantings, better ADA accessibility. So we think that the design that WSP is presenting allows us to make sure that there is a structure and a crossing opened on day one, and then allows us to improve it over time with additional, with additional experiences, public art, and different programming. Another takeaway was that the High Line is a fantastic park. It is well-designed, the plantings are incredible, and it is a very restful and welcoming place in New York, especially in the middle of a bustling city like, a place like Manhattan. However, it does also feel very separated from the rest of the city. And our stakeholders said that the High Line, while a wonderful park, does not meet the open, inclusive, integrated, and welcoming spaces that we aspire to here in Bellevue and in Northwest. So their ask was, can we design something that feels more like the everyday, a part of everyday life for the average Bellevuer? So we think the design we're showing tonight meets that. And then the last takeaway we had was that a lot of the iconic spaces in New York are a public-private partnership. So from the High Line to the Meatpacking District to Times Square and Bryant Park, all of those places have a partner that is helping the city deliver enhanced services that make those places world-class experiences for residents and visitors. So we will be thinking about those operations and how we work with our partners like Friends of the Grand Connection and the Downtown Association as we prepare to deliver the crossing and operate it as a welcoming and inclusive space for Bellevuers for generations to come. With that, Anthony will walk us through several of the design options.
Yeah, so I get the exciting part. I get to show you the actual design of the crossing. So here's a look at what it might look like to cross the Grand Connection Crossing. This is a view looking west on the crossing from the Lincoln Center property, which is a property that the city owns on the Wilburton side of I-405. And this is one of the spaces where the crossing actually widens out with space for vendors, gathering, vertical circulation, so elevators and stairs, and weather protection. One important, important note when you see these renderings as well is that they will continue to evolve as we progress further in design. So if you do get attached to certain elements or you don't like certain elements, they will continue to evolve over time. And we're going to talk about, going to give a little bit of a behind-the-scenes view of how the consultant and the design team reached their key conclusions about the design. So there really were three key factors. And one of the first things that Jesse mentioned was to prioritize the user experience for people on the crossing. This was driven by, you know, very practical considerations. You see some of them on screen. But it also allows us to better integrate with future redevelopment and a future freeway lid. We also were factoring into this consideration construction costs, maintainability, and the structural analysis, where exactly the, the piers will need to be located in order to be able to construct this bridge. Another key factor was related to integration. So we in the design team really do believe that close integration with redevelopment along the crossing could be a signature feature of our bridge here in Bellevue. You see on screen some of the properties that we will be able to integrate redevelopment with, located in blue on that, in that rendering there. This, of course, is more logistically complex, but it preserves more development capacity, both for the city, because we own a number of these properties, and for the private property owners along the route. And of course, it should result in a, a better experience of using the crossing. And then finally, another consideration was related to phasing. We do intend to prioritize a complete link on day one from City Hall Plaza to East Rail. However, we will consider phasing for amenity spaces, integrated structures, some of the things along the route that may not be essential from a transportation perspective. The cost estimates that we will receive very soon will help inform the timeline and what elements, if any, do need to be phased. With that, I'll turn it back over to Maher.
Thank you again, Anthony. So as I said, we're reaching 30% design by the end of the year, and we started thinking about the next step. And one of the steps or one of the items, thinking about how we are going to deliver this project. Traditionally, here in City of Bellevue, especially in the Transportation Department, we design project, then we put it out to bed, and then we build it. So it's called Design Bed Build. For this project, again, because of the size, the complexity, we want to open it for creativity, so we are looking outside of our norm in delivering projects. We engage with WSP, our consultant, where they did their report on possible and feasible delivery methods. And two types of delivery methods came to the top. One, it's called GC CM. It's a general construction and management method where you're bringing on a designer and a construction team working together and developing the projects. Another method, it's called Progressive Design Build. It's another way where you're bringing the designers and contractor partnering together, finishing the design and building the projects. There's some important consideration here. We're considering along this process funding availability, the level of control that we like to have over our project, and also the timeline for completion of the projects. So we're doing a lot of the work. We continue to work with our consultant, WSP. And not just that, we are reaching to other consultants as well, and also reaching to other agencies, tapping onto their experience in, in this field. So there's more to come. And the plan here for us staff to prepare and what's next after the 30% and how we proceed with this project. With that, back to Jesse.
Yes.
Actually, Anthony first.
All right.
We're hopping around a little bit. So funding the crossing has been a focus from the very beginning of this effort. One thing that's very exciting is we do expect to have cost estimates ready in December, which will help us help inform any decisions that we need to make about timeline or phasing. And we've received really positive feedback thus far from our legislative delegations. And we've given a number of tours of the crossing route over the past several months. You'll also see, hear a little bit more about that in your next presentation about the legislative agenda. Of course, as discussed during the council's budget deliberations, there is a $15 million allocation in the 2025-26 budget to fund continued design and engineering. And we're continuing our work on the development of the full capital stack and benefits case for the crossing. This work will involve a number of different funding sources, including philanthropic sources and potential value capture. And we should have more information to share on that early next year. Now over to Jesse.
Another piece of work that we are endeavoring on is the analysis for the future redevelopment of two city-owned parcels. Anthony mentioned these earlier as part of the integrated work for the crossing. So the first parcel on the left side of the screen is called the Metro Site. It is a remnant parcel next to City Hall that we purchased from Metro many years ago. And we are going to be looking at how to redevelop that parcel to integrate well into the civic campus around downtown at Maiden Bower Center. And the other parcel is the Lincoln Center site over in Wilburton across I-405. That site has been very beneficial to the city. It has hosted everything from a small business and startup incubator that helped catalyze Bellevue's startup scene to the temporary men's shelter, and now the Safe Parking Pilot Program. So the city has gotten a lot of use out of that particular parcel, and we will be thinking about the next phase of its life. We've engaged a consultant, Cooper Robertson, that will be doing some constructibility analyses for us over the next few months, looking at what can these sites hold in terms of development capacity once you take into, into account things like the sound transit guideways, setbacks, right-of-way requirements, critical areas. We need to see what's, what footprint is left to build on. They and HRNA, our funding consultants, will be helping us think about future uses and the larger district around the crossing. The crossing really is an opportunity to connect two exciting parts of Bellevue together into a larger district or neighborhood. So we will be thinking about the opportunities for different civic uses, potentially on the, the ground floors or the podiums of buildings, floors one through four, stacked with housing, office, retail, and other activities and uses that help push Bellevue's economy forward for the next 20 years. Because the city owns these two parcels right along the crossing, we have an opportunity to work with our stakeholders to create a mix between the Maiden Bower Center, between East Rail and Light Rail, and the KGIP redevelopment. All of these things together, we have a tremendous opportunity for an 18-hour neighborhood that draws Bellevuers and visitors to this area at multiple hours of the day to engage in civic life, in social life, and commercial life as well. Over the next few months, we'll be working with our consultants to study a variety of things, including municipal operations. So high priority for these sites is to make sure that we deliver, continue to deliver reliable and sustainable city services, then opportunities for civic services, for civic uses that the community can engage in, and finally, private development. We will come back to the council early next year with some guiding principles that would help us understand the waterfall of uses that we would take forward into a future redevelopment. There's a big variety of things that this could include, event venues, market halls, startup incubators, community-- startup incubators, community centers, childcare, a wide variety of things that would help really make this area an even more incredible place to live, work, and visit. Again, we'll be looking for the right mix of public benefits, mixed with the opportunities for value capture out of the development that could pay for capital construction or help pay for ongoing operations of the Grand Connection and the crossing. We really want to make sure that integrates into the rich urban fabric that will be developed based on the comprehensive plan that the council has just adopted. So again, we'll be back in early 2025 with the outline of those guiding principles. With that, we'll look forward some more.
And that is the looking forward. So we are wrapping up work on the 30% design milestone. Cost estimates should be ready very soon, as well as environmental documentation. We're also working very closely with Friends of the Grand Connection on funding development, and we're continuing to work with them. And then finally, yes, we expect to return to council in early 2025 to chat a bit more about next steps on design and our process going forward there, whether it's with a traditional or alternative delivery model, and then guiding principles for redevelopment of the city-owned properties. So with that, we would turn it back to you for any questions from council.
Okay, so no action tonight, just questions or comments? So council members on, let's start with you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, thank you, Jesse, Anthony, Maher. This is so, so exciting that we're at this point. You know, being somebody who was able to go to New York with the BDA and see the Highline, I actually had an opportunity to also visit the Belt Line in Atlanta. That's also around how you have connections, that is also a park and activated spaces. I wrote down what Patrick said because I thought it was so true that it's about this transformative, and then I would add kind of reconnecting communities on both sides of 405 and unlocking Wilberton, so that placemaking activation, as well as being a corridor for pet and bike transportation and mobility, I think is so, so key. I also really appreciate the comment you made about the fact that although we appreciated seeing the Highline, what we realized is that that wasn't the accessible kind of Grand Connection that we were talking about. So we really want that open, inclusive, welcoming Grand Connection, and I'm really excited to hear that because sometimes when we go see somewhere else, we can say we like this, but really, it's not quite us, right? Because it was elevated, it was really locked in, not really accessible from the, the other areas. So I, I appreciate you highlighting that for us. The fact that we have very engaged property owners that want to work with us so that we're actually getting that public-private partnership from the very beginning, along with Amazon, I think that's also really helpful. I also appreciate what you said, which is of those elements on that spider diagram, that the iconic structure is probably not ultimately one that is the best value for us because we are, we've got line two on one side, and then we're going to have the lid on the other, so very practical. And I think that's important because this is going to be an expensive project, so we want to make sure that we're putting our money in the places that has the most impact. So I appreciate that as well. With that said, I, I do have a couple of comments. One is on the cost estimate, I hope that you're coming with a range because at this point in the design, you know, we're, we're a little bit throwing a dart at the wall because of the cone of uncertainty based on this. I think one of the things we're going to have to talk about as a council is as we move forward, are we designing to budget or are we designing to scope? So how do we really have that discipline of thinking about what we can afford, and then as we move forward, how we might look at betterments that we can get if the estimates come much better than we might have expected? So that's one thing. Really appreciate your comp, your work on the project delivery methods because what we're definitely hearing from the industry is that projects that have risk and complexity, Design Bid Build is not one that we're going to attract really great talent from contractors. I mean, they've, we've all seen that Design Bid Build just has way too much risk transfer that may not be good for either the owner or the contractor doing that work. My comment would be that there are a couple of things in the memo that I would like to sit down with you on. Really appreciate the fact that we're looking at progressive design build and GCCM. I want to make sure when we say GCCM, we're talking about heavy civil for a horizontal project because traditional GCCM is more for vertical buildings. And so I think what you, what WSP meant is that it's bringing a partner in that is able to deliver a lot of that work on our behalf. And so I think that is one of the things that we really need to talk about and whether, what kind of risks we want to take on as we move forward with that. So with that said, I'm, I'm also really appreciative of the fact that you're already reaching out to some other public owners because definitely what we're seeing is if you've been to the Overlook down in Seattle, that was delivered as a GCCM from the City of Seattle. So there's, there's one person, there's a group that you can talk to, King County, Sound Transit, the Port washed out are also looking at progressive design builds. So there's some shared learning that we can do together. And in that space, and then I'll stop talking, one of the things that I did hear is that it's helpful to actually have some education for electives. So Tacoma Public Schools in Port Tacoma, when they embarked on their first progressive design build, they actually brought their electives into some training so that they can understand the cadence is a little bit different and really better understanding the delivery methods so that we are partners with the staff instead of, sometimes we can, you know, veer down a path without understanding. So just really excited about where you are. Thank you, thank you.
I'll count, Councilmember Noonhouse, and then you.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, great questions and comments thus far. Very exciting. I'm probably not going to be able to ask half the questions I have right now, this is too early. But thank you, Jesse, Anthony, Maher. Thank you, Amazon, represented by Pearl and Kerry tonight. Without them as such a great community partner on this, we wouldn't be at this 30% design. So that's critically important, and I don't want residents or stakeholders forgetting that. Thank you to the Friends of the Grand Connection. This is, thank you for all your work, thank you for your dedication to this project and going to, to New York. Thank you, BDA, Patrick. I, I've walked that, that, that Highline probably a dozen times, but not in this context, with this view of what could be in Bellevue. And it sounds to me, thankfully, we have the advantage that we're building from the ground up, we're not trying to retrofit something to, 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 to make it work. But I think these types of study tours are just critically important to really understand what we want, and I'm, I'm thrilled as we, we continue to move, continue to move forward. A couple of quick questions. One, I just want to confirm that the current design, because it, it didn't show clearly for me unless I missed one of the, one of the images. And by the way, great job, WSP as well, if they're here tonight or, or listening in. Love some of these renderings and illustrative experiences. The, the bike lanes, are they separated, protected, or are they integrated into the pedestrian walkways as well?
They are separated and protected, yes.
Great, fantastic. And then how, how far across is it in terms of the width, the total width?
I believe the entire length is a half a mile from East Rail all the way to City Hall Plaza.
Okay, the, the width of the actual crossing, though.
The width?
Yes.
So we-
Is it 40 feet?
That's 40 feet over the freeway, and it goes to 70 feet on the nodes.
Okay, terrific. And then is the space flexible enough to have a lot of pop-up or activations on it as well, or will it be kind of set in place? I'm sure this is something you've thought about, but I know on the Highline, they have a lot of art pop-ups, food, et cetera. Do we allow for space to that to happen as well?
Yes, it's specifically mostly at the nodes. These two wide nodes, and one of the illustrations shows small vendors and area of opportunities. And also on the east side, down below, also, there's another area will be opportunity for community gathering and vendors and these type of activities as well.
Okay, terrific.
And I would add really quickly, Councilmember-
Yes, please.
That would be the day one experience. So the other piece is to think about the redevelopment and integration. So similar to how the Highline goes over and through the Chelsea Market Building, the Standard Hotel Building, as the City Hall, the city-owned properties and the privately-owned properties redevelop, we will encourage them to think about those opportunities to provide more space for bathrooms, vertical circulation, small food vendors, et cetera, over time.
Okay, terrific. The cost estimates, you're going to get that in December. Is that coming to council in December as well, or is that going to be part of your early 2025, Q and 2025 presentation?
That'll be part of early 2025.
Okay, okay, great. And I agree with my councilmembers on here, it would be great to get some different options there, you know, in terms of that, those cost estimates, I think that would be really great, and what we get, and, and again, the design versus scope, I think that's, that's really, really important. One thing, and, you know, I'm not a designer, but when I look at this and I see that kind of like waffle-like structure, what is, what do we call that? Thank you. Is there a name for that kind of waffle-like structure that's above to protect, I would think to protect people from sun or, and rain?
Some weather protection there.
Just a crazy thought, if we extended Pilote and we had a type of Pilote effect there just to connect the Grand Connection to another part of the, the path and in terms of the, the, you know, the opening or the entrance to the, to our, to our Bellevue Downtown Park. Just, just a thought, if that were to make sense. He happens to be a Brooklyn artist as well, right? But, but what a fun way to connect the, the Grand Connection and another indicator that they're on the Grand Connection throughout. So just, just a thought on that. And then lastly, I'm so glad we're thinking already about properties and, and, and those that might be impacted as we continue to move forward here. And principally, I'm thinking about the safe parking lot that we have right now and that. So I think the sooner we start thinking about where that needs to shift and where that needs to go, and in, in a way that we can shift them to another property when the time comes and do so in a seamless manner. So those families that make use of that facility, they're not going to be impacted. So thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Stokes.
You know, thank you, and I really appreciate Councilmember Noonhouse's comments about the thing when, when we're operating it, that's something we sometimes, we get to get it put up there and say, wait a minute, you know? But just wanted, I do want to call out again BDA because this has been a long, and remind everybody, this is not something we just invented a couple of weeks ago or something. And we went out, first one we went to was to Denver with BDA and Greg Johnson, and, and we went, that was, that was the first one. I came back just, wow, in fact, I came back so excited to have Brown Bag thing after, you know, the next week. But we started working on BDA, and you have to give BDA kudos for staying with this thing and being the catalyst that kept it going. And then we went to Dallas, and that's where Clyde Warren Park and, and the mayor was very, very excited about, about that piece. And they, they were the ones we saw really putting a slab across the freeway. And the work they did was, was really important. And, you know, we've gone through a lot of different things, and one of the things that I want to point out and which we can keep going in the future for Bellevue is we just don't give up. And we keep working till we get what we want on that. And again, this thing that Councilmember Noonhouse is talking about are things that have come from all of that and questions and everything and how we put together. So I think that's, that is really amazing. And, you know, the work that a lot of people around the city, I want to think we recognize them at this point, certainly Amazon has just been amazing coming here. And Greg Johnson and, and Spring District have been the catalyst at the beginning of this whole thing. So this is, is something that will, again, move Bellevue forward in a very, very positive way. And the, the one thing we have to look at is making sure we don't make any just, well, we've got to put this up here a certain way and things like that. And again, I'm hearing very much that this is a very, very well-coordinated operation. Let's just keep it that way because that's how we're going to get this done. And again, it just comes down to persistence and faith in the future. And we have to, when we get to the money part, we really got to think, okay, we're going to do this, and it's going to cost, but this is going to make Bellevue really great, and it's going to really be something for the community. So just wanted to, to say, this has been a long time for us working on this, and this takes time. But again, I, I, I believe in, in the questions that Councilmember Zahn asked are the type of questions we need to work on now. So we're all working together on this. Just wanted to thank everybody for doing this and just really celebrate at this point what we've done altogether. So let's just keep going.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update. Really appreciate the comprehensive public engagement process. I know there's a lot coming, but I think so far it's really been stellar. Appreciate how well organized and thorough you are and making it easy on us, I think, to make some decisions and keep moving things forward. So feels really good. Also appreciate you and other staff and some of my colleagues prioritizing the trip to New York. I think it was really helpful. And clearly, there's some pretty significant differences in what we're looking to do with the Grand Connection. But I, I found the trip really valuable, and I, I was a little skeptical going in, wondering, you know, what does New York have to teach us and what they teach us, do we actually want to do? But I came away really being positive about it. I think, as you mentioned earlier, this focus on the user experience is really critical. And the Highline, it's kind of choose your own adventure. So there's a lot of things you can go to the Highline for. You can sit, you can meet, you can have a coffee, you can read a book. So I think that, that's really important, and focusing on that for users of the, the Grand Connection and especially the crossing, I think is really important. Also, you know, the design of the structure should enhance the experience of being on the Grand Connection Crossing. I think that, that's really important, and I think you've, just in what we're seeing, you know, you're certainly on to that, and some of those elements look like they'll do just that. Also, too, thinking of the Grand Connection, I mean, it is going to do a lot of good for downtown and for Wilberton, but the benefits are going to go way beyond just those two neighborhoods. So I think, you know, as we go forward, really focusing on those benefits and maximizing them when we can is important. The Highline brought a lot of vibrancy to a part of Manhattan that needed it, and I think it provided a model for the rest of the city, and it seems like folks there are paying attention to that, using it as a template to do other things in other parts of the city. And I think the Grand Connection and the crossing will, will do that as well for us. Activation is going to be critical. I know we're thinking about that and just encourage us to keep doing that. And then too, you know, just thinking about what goes on on the Grand Connection and then, and specifically the, the crossing that meets a community need, draws people to it. And then how do we maintain it? You know, the governance of the Grand Connection and the crossing is really going to be important. I'm sure we'll have that dialed in, but I, I think that is especially important. And two, you know, just thinking about what the, the Grand Connection and the crossing is going to do for us because, you know, really, I think it's also about supporting housing density in one of our newest neighborhoods, providing a climate-friendly transportation option, creating more park spaces, encouraging tourism. So it, it's a crossing, it does a lot of things, but it certainly goes well beyond just getting folks from A to B. Also, the Overlook was mentioned in Seattle. So I think that, you know, I, I think of the Overlook, and I think of really how the Alaskan Way Viaduct separated the City of Seattle from its waterfront, so the downtown from one of its, you know, really critical and important neighborhoods. And I think that, that the crossing for us helps ensure that we're never in a position of having to rebuild a connection from one major part of our city to another. And we won't have a connection that needs to be rebuilt, you know, if, if we have the crossing in place as Wilberton comes alive. So really, and, and I want to just keep the momentum, keep the Grand Connection Crossing moving forward. There's just too many benefits to this project and not strongly keep pushing it. So full speed ahead, look forward to seeing you back here in early 2025 to get another update, and just anxious to support this effort and making sure that 2028's a realistic possibility. So all in favor. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Well, this is quite something.
Well, this is quite something. Let me give you a little bit of the historical perspective. You know, this is amazing when two major visionary projects are happening right now together. One is Belgrade Corridor, the other is Wilberton Connection from east to the west of 405. Both were a vision to Belgrade Corridor to connect the downtown Bellevue to all the way to Redmond because this is Microsoft, the center of technology. Bellevue is the center of, you know, the economic center or the east side. Okay? And Wilberton is divide, you know, connecting the east to the west of I-405. It was no longer two city, it's connected one city. And however, you know, we don't know what's going to be. You know, I have some tributations. I always said that devil is in the detail. You know, we said, well, let's connect it. Well, we can connect anything with anything. What's going to happen to be, it could be a cow pasture. It could be anything, right? So what it takes is how do we make it work? For what purpose? That's the key. And we never really talk about clearly what the purpose is going to be. But now, when you presented to me last week, you know, I was really, my mind boggled. I was really excited about what you are creating. The, the Wilberton Grand Connection with the purpose of basically providing a vibrant area for the people who live in Bellevue, for the resident of Bellevue. You know, because we're going to connect the people from the rest of the city together. That's, that's the one goal. But how do you do that? That's the key. The key is that you're developing it. You're helping the partners, the city providing the cross connection. The integration, I like the word they're using, integrated approach. You are making a connection, providing whatever space you have there, which has not been used, you know? But you are, people own the property. They want to make sure it's of the best use possible. So we are making it possible for them to make connections so that they can use it in a way they can maximize the pleasure, the usage, the people who will go there, who are going to go whatever they want to do. Like comment made by, you know, Councilmember Newenhouse, the structure that attract people, protect people. And I saw, when you showed me the bridge that goes from east to west, it's not just a bridge. That bridge connects all the neighborhoods, south and north of land. Somehow, right now, they're not connected. Right now, they're connected by what? By cow pasture or by train or by automobile or bicycle? But by developing a connection from the people walking on the bridge or bicycling the bridge or somehow connecting to the building that is performing a function that creates an integration. It bring people connecting from all along the corridor, not just along the corridor, from the east to the west and becomes protected, becomes functional, becomes fun, becomes a lively place. I think that's what it is about. It's not for tourists. I want to be sure it's not just for tourists. Tourists come, they come and then they go. They come when the economy is good. We don't need them. They come to compete with our local residents. We, when the economy is not good, they're not here. This is when we need them. We want to have the local resident have the experience all year long. You know, at the same time, we're going to be welcoming tourists because they bring additional economy. They help our hotels, they help our activities. More importantly, they help our local business. When you have activities people enjoy, people get to use, leave their house from wherever they are in the city. They go there because it is a vital, viable, fun place to be. This is what brings economic development. So I'm really glad, in conclusion, that economic development is working on this because this is economic development. It's good for the residents, good for the people in the city and good for bringing people, the economy, helping local businesses, big or small, hotels, businesses, restaurants, whatever they are doing because that's the people coming here. So I think that's something I really am glad to see. So now we have a purpose, we have a vision, and that's what's happening to Grand Connection. And same time, it's iconic because it attracts people to come here. So I want to thank Amazon to be able to identify that, to help generate a vital economy because that bring people to live and to work, to play here. That provides the talent. And that, well, I'm not even going to talk about Belgrade Corridor because it's another opportunity that's all the way along from Bellevue to Redmond. So I'm really glad this is going to be something we can be looking at at the end of the year. So I, I really am excited about this. I've never been excited about this until I saw your presentation. Before I said, what's it going to be? Going to be a cow pasture? I don't know. Now it's not. Okay. So I have a question for you. You talk about the construction method, GCCM, and you talk about the consultant. I would like to know a little more about, I mean, I'm completely ignorant, unlike Councilmember Zahn, she knows all of the construction. You have to explain to us, what is the battle method? Who are the proven way of doing this? What experience that you have learned from people who do this kind of project, right? So we need to learn more about it. And I finally want to know, who are the contractor? The names are very, it's not familiar to me. So maybe you can play a few notes. Who are they? Are they out of space from moon or from Mars or from where? So if you can tell us a little bit about it, it'd be very helpful.
Sure. We'll let you know once we have these contractors onboard. So right now, we're just working with our consultant, WSP, on the design side.
Just curious.
I'm sorry?
Never heard about a consultant before.
WSP is a...
Istanbul, we need you too.
It's a nationwide, it's, it's a global consulting firm. It was multi-discipline, very well experienced in all type of civil engineering projects.
Local company?
They are, they have an office here in Seattle, but they are a global company all over the world.
Global company?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I really missed that presentation that you had with Conrad Lee because he's impressed. It was a great presentation and I don't know, I really wish I was there. WSP is a very well-known structural engineering, they have a lot of disciplines, but they are very legit firm. Just wanted to make sure, confirm that. All right, thank you so much, Jesse, Anthony, and Edward, Andrea, Kyle, June. There were lots of names on the agenda, so I want to thank all of you for your hard work on the Grand Connection and Crossing and all of the projects. I think it's a milestone to have these type, size, and location reports finalized. I also wanted to thank the friends of the Grand Connection for their hard work and helping us to do something meaningful for our city. And all of my fellow councilmembers had great comments, so I appreciate all of them. I have three questions, comments. One is, how far are we on the city-owned property development plan?
We are still in the early stages. Our consultants at Cooper Robertson started their initial work maybe two-ish, three-ish months ago. So right now, their, their current work is really understanding the restrictions that are on the properties from a constructability standpoint.
So that's, so are you worried about that? Because that's exactly my point. Development, any property has a lot of restriction, especially one of the properties really weird. Then you are going to integrate that with the pedestrian connection and corridor. That creates another restriction. And I think it's going to be the problem of chicken and eggs. We need this one, the development, our city plan, to feed into the design of the bridge. And if we don't have that on time, I think it's going to impact the design of the bridge. So are you concerned about that we are a little bit behind on what we are going to do with the city-owned property and the impact that it does on the design of the bridge?
The work that Cooper Robertson is going to be doing over the next few months will sync up well. So their, their initial scope will wrap up in the first half of 2025. And that will give us the opportunity to make the 60% design work sync up really well with the next phase of work for the city sites. So it is all intended to kind of sequence a little bit from Cooper Robertson, then a little bit from WSP so that everything does work cohesively together at the end.
Thank you. Do we have, as of, as of this moment, what is our vision for activation? What type of events, businesses, community-focused activities we are doing on the ground floor for the whole thing, especially on the nodes? Because again, this also impacts the design.
And then do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I can start. So certainly, one of the things that we've been thinking about is how exactly we're going to activate those spaces and what exactly it's going to take to be able to do that. Governance is going to be a really important question. Who is going to be the programmer, right? That's something that we're going to have to figure out in a future phase. It likely is not going to be the city itself that would be the one programming the, the Crossing itself or the, the nodes along the Crossing. That said, we've been testing a number of things this summer in the City Hall Plaza space. So the, the food trucks that you've seen, the furniture that we've been putting out there, we've also been testing a number of events in that space. So the, the Two Line Grand Opening, the India Day Celebration. These have been in service of trying to understand what some of those governance questions might look like when we come to the, the question of how exactly are we going to program the Crossing? So important work to come there, I think with partners for the most part. But really, the goal is to create a welcoming space. I think that, that word welcome or welcoming, I think, has been something that's come up in all of our conversations. You know, we, one of the things I sometimes hear, for example, is, you know, I might not feel, from residents in Bellevue, I might not feel welcome in downtown Bellevue. What can we do to use the Crossing as a tool to meet that need? I think that's something that's really been at the forefront of our mind and programming is going to be an important piece of that.
100%. And again, I think we should be a little bit, my whole concern, and hopefully you don't have the concern because if you don't have, then I don't have, is, is that vision and that programming and everything is going to impact the design of the bridge and how we are going to be ahead of that?
I think we're ready in that sense.
Okay, great.
Exactly.
We are considering how we will invite the community onto the space as part of the design work.
That's awesome. I think my last question is what we just heard Councilmember Zahn mention and then Councilmember Lee had concern is the difference of delivery method. The GCCM, general contractor, construction manager, and then the design building is going to technical. And there are some fancy name and fancy method that I don't think it has a great success. I think the progressive design build, what I've heard so far is something that maybe as a city, we are not ready to be involved in that many meetings that is required in those kind of delivery method. As a, as a client, we are going to be, and again, I'm not sure how beneficial is that. So I really, I'm sure you are thinking about that, but I think that phase of selecting the contractor and then delivery method of that, I think, would be very, very important, especially because the city is the client and we want to have control in the design. So I think we should be very careful of what method of delivery we will choose. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So I too want to thank the Friends of the Grand Connection. You've taken this from aspirational to a reality. And it's so exciting to see this coming to life and planning and investing in it. It's a real gift to the people who will be working and living on, in Wilberton and downtown. But it's very important to me that this be a gift to the community as well outside of those areas so that people can access downtowns by going on East Trail, getting on the Grand Connection, coming down. I just, I, I know we can do that and it's important to me that we do. I'm, it's funny that the Councilmember Newenhouse mentioned Pilote because I mentioned that at our briefing as well. So I completely agree with you. And the last thing is, in Dallas, and I believe, well, they had a little, it was a little different in New York in terms of fundraising, but they had people in charge of creating the public-private partnerships. And I hope that we have that as a line item of something we're going to do to pull this all together and get the funding that we need to, to actually make this happen.
That last part, yes. So the consultant work from HRNA will inform kind of what those capital, what the investment types will be from which types of groups and help us understand what are the structures or staff that we need to help bring that to life.
Even, you know, a sense of who the potential funders might look like. So we will have kind of a, a rough sense of, you know, what scale of funder are we looking at and, you know, what types of funders in terms of, you know, different members of the community.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. We are going to take a break till eight o'clock. Okeydoke. We're on to our second out of three study session items. City Manager, would you like to introduce this one for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and Council. So this is the 2025 proposed state legislative agenda. And staff will review a draft with you this evening. The, the city does adopt a legislative agenda every year. And this allows staff and the city officials to work and articulate the city's legislative priorities to state lawmakers and state agencies and other jurisdictions. So we have joining us from the city manager's office, Jenicee Atkins, deputy city manager, Katie Kusimbo-Halsey, assistant director of intergovernmental affairs. And behind them, I'd like to introduce Matthew Gray, management fellow who has been helping them in the development of this process. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Jenicee.
All right. Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be back with you again this evening. It is hard to believe that it is that time again to really get our stuff in gear to be ready for the next legislative session coming up at the beginning of next year. We have done a lot of work and my esteemed colleague Katie Halsey is going to walk through what we've done to date. I'm going to be more of a resource for you to answer questions and for your discussion and consideration later. But we are really excited to bring this before you for consideration so that we can get ready and do the work now that will put us in the position we want to be in for the next state legislative session. And so we appreciate the energy you've already spent with us before tonight's presentation and your continued attention. I'll turn it over to our wonderful assistant director for intergovernmental relations, Katie Kusimbo-Halsey.
Thanks, Jenicee. One thing, Jenicee, I'll just mention is that we generally do approve a federal legislative agenda in about the middle of the year. So that's usually about May, I believe, in 2024. But today, we're going to focus on the state. Councilmembers, thank you for having me here today. And Mayor, Deputy Mayor, I really appreciate all the feedback so far. Today, we are asking for your direction. We are also recommending that you, as a council, discuss and consider the adoption of a state legislative agenda in advance of the 2025 legislative session. So let me give you a glimpse of what we're going to be discussing this evening. First, I'm going to give you a preview of the 2025 legislative session and how we developed a draft legislative agenda, including key legislative priorities, our state policy statement draft, and also walk through the AWC priorities issues and talk through some next steps before the legislative session begins. So let's get started with that preview. The 2025 legislative session will begin on January 13th, 2025. It is a long session, so that means it'll be 105 days long. This is the time of the year, of the biennium. This is the time of the year, of the biennium, that they discuss and adopt their budgets, their operating capital and transportation budgets. Now, the budget environment is uncertain. And we'll learn more in the coming months, coming weeks and coming months, actually. But here are a few challenges that they're facing. They're facing pretty significant revenue, reduced revenue projections for both the operating and the transportation budgets. It will really complicate fiscal planning and could require some difficult trade offs. Also, K through twelve public education funding, there will likely be a very large and heightened request for increased funding for public schools reflecting ongoing concerns about educational resources and equity. And also, the outcomes of the initiative on the November ballot, that could have a pretty major impact on both the capital, I'm sorry, the operating and the transportation budgets. But with that election just around the corner, two weeks away, there are also going to be changes in leadership and a lot of activity and potential shifts in policy direction. So we, as staff, are assessing the ballot measures for that that November election. We're assessing potential leadership changes and committee assignments that will change over time and really helping us to better understand the landscape for two thousand and twenty five. And even before session begins, we will be monitoring prefiled legislation that starts in roughly early December. And we'll be monitoring the legislative committee days, the week of December ninth, when the House and the Senate hold committee hearings and work sessions. So all of this work is leading up to a really good preview of what the session will have to come. And I'd also like to note that on November twentieth, there'll be a revenue review meeting. Well, we'll hear more information about budget projections. That will help to lead into the governor's proposed budget by December twentieth. Something a little strange or maybe odd this year is that we get to have two governors' budgets, one for the existing current governor and then one for the incoming governor. So I wanted to give you some background on how we developed the proposed draft legislative agenda for two thousand and twenty five. During the summer months, Matthew and I did a lot of work with department directors, but also legislative liaisons who were identified in each of our departments here in the city. And we relied on them to tell us more about their legislative priorities looking forward and also lessons learned from the two thousand and twenty four legislative session. In September, the Intergovernmental Relations Team spent some time assessing those draft priorities and positions that we heard about. And we really compared them to council priorities and the strategic target areas. We wanted to ensure alignment. We also compared the draft agenda with external agencies, with committees and boards that many of you serve on, and external partners. Finally, as all of you know, Jenicee and I met with each of you individually to understand your priorities and address your questions and in particular, to refine the draft legislative agenda. Your input was incredibly important in what you see in front of you today. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about the state legislative agenda, which is a crucial step. The development of it is a crucial step for the city as we prepare for the upcoming legislative session. And I wanted to cover about three main purposes of the state legislative agenda to really frame this conversation. First, the legislative agenda is a guiding document. And it really helps to serve with some clear framework that outlines the city's policy priorities and positions for the legislative session to come, ensuring that all stakeholders internally are aligned. Second, it's a really tremendous communications tool. It can effectively communicate the city's positions to public and state lawmakers, highlighting what the issues are that the city prioritizes. And of course, after we approve the draft, we'll turn that into a much more formal and fancy version that we will then distribute to legislators. And third, it really helps to inform our lobbying efforts. And while the agenda provides a roadmap for lobbying activities, it does not limit the city's ability to advocate for issues outside of it as long as we have existing policies, such as the comprehensive plan that you just adopted today. That really helps to align or to balance out what you all are looking at today and can help guide our responses to new legislative proposals that we may not know about or may be coming a few months from now. So in other words, the agenda allows for flexibility and nimbleness. Two parts of that legislative agenda are the key legislative priorities, which I'm going to go through in much more detail. That's where we're going to focus our legislative efforts. And then the state policy statement that's organized by the strategic target areas, and those are a bit more broad. So let's start with the first key legislative priority that I'll cover tonight is related to the Bellevue Grand Connection. And you heard an excellent presentation earlier this evening, so I won't re-capture everything that they mentioned. But one particular piece of the Bellevue Grand Connection is a project called the Downtown Integration Project. And it is improving sightlines and adjusting utilities to integrate with the the Grand Connection crossing. This project will not only prepare city hall block for future developments, but it will also enhance public spaces, accessibility, and provides that safety that we that was discussed earlier today. Given those budget constraints that I mentioned earlier, particularly on the transportation and operating budgets, we are recommending that the city submit this request through the capital budget. Targeting a nine hundred thousand dollar request aligns well with budget leaders, budget leaders guidance. And I also just want to highlight that you heard Anthony talk about phasing for amenity space. This is a great opportunity for us to take one piece of a much larger project and really use this opportunity and the timing to secure an investment as soon as possible. The next key priorities are really focused on transportation. And we've discussed this earlier, the transportation budget is facing significant challenges, primarily due to declining gas tax revenues and rising project costs. As the state is grappling with these issues, it's really important for Bellevue to continue advocating for key transportation projects while also navigating the financial pressures on budget writers. So if a transportation package develops in two thousand and twenty five, we are recommending that we submit a budget request for the Bellevue Grand Connection I four oh five project consistent with the presentation and feedback that you heard this morning. We are going to look for any opportunity to advance that request, understanding what the political climate is during the legislative session. And then moving down through the list, Bellevue has long championed infrastructure improvements to maximize the effectiveness of the I four oh five corridor and the implementation of the I four oh five master plan. And as the budget, as the transportation budget picture becomes clearer, we will work with project stakeholders and WashDOT to advocate for several different projects, including one that's listed on your screen, the S R five twenty one twenty fourth project. And then as well as projects to maximize the effectiveness of the fifty mile corridor system, express tolling system. This would include the Northeast Sixth Street Extension and Coal Creek Parkway projects that are included in the Rent into Bellevue Contract Three project, as well as interchange improvements and I four oh five access projects. Next, in my final slide about key priorities, is an area where I believe that Bellevue's strength in coalition building and regional leadership really shine. So first, digital permitting. This project would modernize the mybuildingpermit.com platform and addresses critical digital permitting needs for cities and counties across Washington State. Investing in the modernization of the site aligns with Bellevue's commitment to innovation and customer service. And this project not only improves the operational efficiency of mybuildingpermit.com, but also strengthens Bellevue's role as a regional leader in permitting solutions. This project supports broader goals and responds to legislative direction by enhancing service delivery, fostering economic development, and improving overall customer service in the permitting process. However, modernizing and streamlining local project review wasn't just a directive from the legislature. It's also a way to help our affordable housing crisis in Washington, which brings me to the next on the list, which is affordable housing. Consistent with last year's legislative agenda, supporting flexible funding options for local jurisdictions to address affordable housing is proposed as a key priority for two thousand and twenty five. And this issue has dominated recent legislative sessions. And the state has already passed significant legislation related to housing and land use. And cities like Bellevue want to be part of the solution. Yet without significant long term dedicated funding, it will be challenging to build to the scale of affordable housing that is needed. So Bellevue is asking for this legislature to provide adequate funding while allowing us the time to implement recent legislation. Moving on to the two thousand and twenty five state policy statement. And what's new about the state policy statement this year is that it's aligned and framed around the strategic target areas. You also may notice when you're looking through the draft legislative agenda that the policy statement bullets are relatively broad in nature. And you also may notice that as we enter into a new legislative biennium, we are trying to be flexible and nimble. One example of this is our attempt to not use acronyms. I'll give you an example. Last year's RAP Act or RERAP Act might have an entirely different acronym this upcoming legislative session. So instead, we really try to work with the policy term that most people would understand or the legislature in particular, and in this case, extended producer responsibility. Based on your feedback, we have elevated and edited different requests, including one I just want to call out, which is water and wastewater infrastructure investment, which is now located under high quality built and natural environment. I also wanted to note, and we'll talk about it a little bit more, that we're working to identify other opportunities to include this type of legislation in other other legislative agendas. We incorporated many different opportunities or comments that we heard from you, art investment, capacity building for partners, sustained transportation revenue sources, Vision Zero, the list does go on. And I hope that we have represented your feedback well. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about the A W C legislation, I'm sorry, the A W C legislative agenda, which was approved in late September. And I want to take just a moment to thank Councilmember Newenhouse, who served on the A W C Legislative Priorities Committee for two thousand and twenty four, and that continues on through two thousand and twenty five. The city was really able to influence the A W C legislative agenda and priorities as a result of your work on that committee. And I'll give you one example, and you're welcome to elaborate on it, Councilmember. You were able to champion and really elevate the need for funding to maintain and improve aging wastewater and stormwater treatment systems. That previously was not on the A W C legislative agenda, but now it is one of the key priorities. Thank you. And while our legislative agenda items are not identical to the A W C legislative agenda items, there are many issues where our collective voice will be stronger when we speak together. However, I just want to note that as your team here, we are guided by the city's adopted state legislative agenda and not necessarily by any other legislative agenda. Your feedback is what we will take to heart when we go to Olympia. Okay, so some next steps before we enter into session. In November and December, we will advance key legislative priorities, including partner discussions, and we'll work on those budget requests. And then we will also identify some dates during the two thousand and twenty five legislative session when we can all head down to Olympia. On December second, we are starting to narrow in on a date and time for the forty first and the forty eighth district legislators to come to Bellevue City Hall. And we will welcome them and share with them our priorities for the legislative session. We'd welcome you all to join us for that. More information will be coming. Legislative session starts on January thirteenth, and A W C City Action Days happens on February nineteenth and twentieth. One additional thing I want to mention is that every month, the Intergovernmental Relations Team shares the State Relations Report, and it often includes a summary of election results or major state issues or a preview of the upcoming session. And I hope that you'll give it some time to read. And finally, staff recommends discussion and consideration of adoption of the legislative agenda.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions on this? Can give me. Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. And you guys do an amazing job, both Jenicee, Katie, Matthew. Thank you so much for being on the lurking on the background. I have one quick question. First of all, I appreciate the digital governance collaboration, and I think there's a potential that Bellevue lead this kind of digital governance and technology infrastructure. And I think we need to position ourselves to be a a model city for tech enabled governance. So I really appreciate that. Hopefully, we become even bigger and more. The question I have is, I saw several times the workforce mentioned in your package. But I didn't get how are we tying that to any of the state? My comment was so good that they are cheering me out there. Where was, oh, the workforce development. So I saw the in package several places. But I couldn't find the connection of the statewide workforce development initiatives and how we are tying, or what are we asking? I couldn't find that specifically. What am I missing?
Absolutely. I am looking at page number four. I hope it's the same page for you as well, which is the vibrant economy and captures the economic and workforce development. Something I just wanted to flag and note is that for the state policy statement, we oftentimes use this opportunity to advance or to champion work happening with other organizations or entities. And so we closely monitor legislative agendas from other organizations as well. Approving this legislative agenda allows us to know where your preferences are and allows us to then look or be receptive to those opportunities to partner or to advocate. But I'm going to look to you, Jenicee, to see if you have anything.
Thanks, Katie. The one thing, great question, Deputy Mayor. The thing I would say about workforce development is that there the nexus between Bellevue's role in workforce development and the state's role in supporting workforce development shows up in a few different ways. You can see some of them borne out here on page four. A lot of it is in the pipeline, work to build the degree production, both at two year colleges, at four year colleges, also through the skilled trades and apprenticeship programs. That's something that we talked about a lot last year when we launched our apprenticeship program here. And then it's also through different programs, through a little bit the Department of Commerce and supporting our small businesses. And then also trying to be a partner in advocating for additional investment in arts and in the creative economy. That's something we try to do as well as in technology and work we've weighed in quite a bit last year on some A I issues and some digital equity issues. But a lot of the intersection with workforce is also at the federal level, and that is often through the Small Business Administration. And so we try to support and augment and advocate for those workforce development needs in a lot of different spaces. And so it shows up in different ways, but these are the ways that it usually shows up for us to advocate as a strong partner in Olympia.
Great. I I think it's, you kind of answered my questions, and I just wanted to make sure that we are thinking about that. I think our workforce development is behind in our city, and we have a role to advocate for that, especially as you mentioned in tech and green industries. So we should ensure that any workforce legislation directly support our city's economic goals. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Newenhouse?
Great presentation, and I really want to thank you for the time that you took to meet with each council member individually and integrate. to meet with each council member individually and integrate and implement all of our thoughts and concerns, which I'm sure was no small task, but I really appreciate it. And I really appreciate you also just keeping us focused on, because every legislative session is a little bit different, as you pointed out quite rightly, in terms of, you know, where the winds are headed, what's possible, what's not, what funding is available, what is not, and really keeping us focused on what is achievable for this session forthcoming. So I really want to thank you for that versus pie-in-the-sky things that we would never get. However, there is at times reasons why we want to continue to reiterate to certain things that are long-term priorities for the city. And in that vein, I had two small amendments, both in the Transportation Section, which I believe is on page five. The first one was on the last bullet. I wanted to just tweak that last bullet about smart mobility. And for my colleagues, I sent this copy and these amendments to Katie and Genesi prior to this, just so we wouldn't be wordsmithing back and forth. But that amendment would read, and this is partially what is already there. Bellevue supports innovation and connectivity through the expansion of next-generation smart mobility and autonomous vehicle technologies that integrate connected vehicle systems with sensors at signalized intersections and enables a statewide framework for the operation of fully autonomous vehicles. So the autonomous vehicle and then that last sentence that I add, that's the addition to that bullet. Reason why, I think this is something that we have recognized previously. We've already developed some guidance on preparing, planning, and implementing AV technologies in the city of Bellevue. What I hear is that Bellevue is unfortunately not necessarily a big enough market in order for us, or I would say vendors, to look to do testing or see this as a viable network for them. And they usually want some type of state framework in place before they would come here, similar to what they're doing in Nevada, for example, Amazon with the, I think it's called the Zook, which is, they're running around everywhere down there, but they have that state framework. So that's something in addition I would like to see, but it's also good for improving traffic flow, reducing our greenhouse gases, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of good reasons to get, so that's the first one. I don't know if we want to pause and get my colleagues' thoughts on that.
I'd like to get staff's feedback on that proposal.
Absolutely. This is very much in line. Supporting autonomous vehicles is very much in line and supportive of Bellevue's Smart Mobility Plan. And we have weighed in on legislation in previous sessions about autonomous vehicles and generally are incredibly supportive of this conversation at the state level. There was a piece of legislation last year where we commented on opportunities to ensure that the legislation addresses unique operational and equity needs within communities. And we offered to the bill sponsors that we'd like to continue working with them on that legislation. However, a key milestone passed, and so that legislation moved no further during the 2024 legislative session. So I do think that autonomous vehicles is in alignment with Bellevue's Smart Mobility Plan.
Does anybody have a problem with that proposed amendment? You can give me a head shake or a nod, no problem, no problem, no problem. Okay. Do you have a problem with the amendment?
Well, it sounds like that there, this is not the only approach on this. And I understand, I think the concept sounds good, but it's hard to vote on something that we really don't understand what this really means. And is this, is this a really...
I think we just got a very good explanation from staff addressing those concerns. That's why I asked what their input was.
Would you say that for this specific way to approach it?
He gave an amendment, and so they are critiquing, they're giving us feedback on the impacts of that amendment. Go ahead.
May I? I think that we feel fine with this amendment. It is consistent with some of our other adopted policy. I think Councilmember Stokes, to address your concern, you know, across the entire body of the state policy statement and the priorities, there are a lot of different things that we say that we support and encourage. There have been some considerations that we have elevated with other legislation, some of which would forego or supersede the city's ability to regulate for safety as well as equity concerns. So we just have to bring that all in balance. And so we really do support autonomous vehicles as a great smart mobility option. We just need to make sure that we don't, you know, hand over, if you will, the keys entirely to a third party or the private sector. We want to make sure that we're providing everything in balance and safeguarding those other needs. So this amendment doesn't get in the way of that.
I think Councilmember Stokes is clarifying that as written, this, you think this is...
Yeah, I just wanted, because it sounds pretty bland when it comes out in the language. So I think this helps a lot. Just want to make sure. And some people know more about it than others, so I appreciate that. So I'm fine.
Okay, let's go back to Councilmember Nguyen-House. You had another amendment, I believe.
I'll try to be a little more spicy on this. Next one. Thank you. In terms of, you know, being past precedence and also wanted to continue to bang the drummer around 405, I know we have it in the front of the document, but on page five, it's not listed amongst, you know, the multimodal vision that we have. We have revenue on there and Vision Zero, bike, pet, et cetera. But we don't mention 405, which I think is important to do here. So it's just reemphasizing, I think, what we've said previously and continuously. So I would like to add one additional bullet to that page five that says Bellevue supports infrastructure improvements to maximize investments in our state's highways and relieve significant congestion in our region. Funding is needed to advance and implement the 405 Master Plan in key segments like the South Downtown I-405 Axis Improvement Project, in parentheses, Lake Hills Connector, and their 405 interchange improvements at I-90 and SR-520.
Just for clarification, is that the one that Kevin Wallace recommended or proposed? Is that the same language or no?
It's not the same language. This is actually language that Katie and I had a discussion about as well to make sure that it was aligned with past policy as well as what we're...
I'm just trying to see what the difference is. It looks really similar.
I would be happy to explain the difference. It is very consistent with previous legislative agenda items, where we did go into a bit more specificity on the various different projects. So the primary difference is the first portion of the sentence that says Bellevue supports projects to maximize investments of our state highways and relieve significant congestion in our region. That is existing language in our current legislative agendas. And then the projects that are listed after what I just said are projects we have supported in our previous legislative agendas and in our federal legislative agenda.
Okay. So I assume that since you helped write this, that you feel like this is a good way to express it. Does anybody have a problem with this amendment? Not seeing a problem. Okay, so that's good. All right, do you have any others?
No, thank you so much.
Okay. I'm going to go to Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I think this is really good work. So like what you've come up with, it's a comprehensive list, strikes the right tones, well-balanced. You've already captured my feedback from our earlier briefing, so really no more to add to that. So I'm just kind of thinking about next steps and implementation. And I think it's important that we all play our roles in achieving our legislative goals. So I think it's important that we deploy council members and staff strategically and consistently, and that we are always ready to make use of the numerous communications channels available to us to promote our legislative agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
No, I'm fine. I'm fine. And I appreciate getting me at least educated on that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Lee?
I've been looking for transportation as well, technology. I thought our old legislative agenda has pretty much included EV, autonomous vehicle, technology. But for some reason, I couldn't find this. Before I go into that, I want to make a general comment. I want to thank you, Genesi and Katie, for being very responsive. You listen to us, you work with us, and you try to be very strategic. We tend to, as council members, come up with ideas. But you know the broader picture, working with our legislators, various different legislators. So I think we appreciate your advice, suggestions, as to when and what, you know, to accomplish our goal. But our goal is still there. So when I read this, I also find that in transportation, I see, you know, ACES. The abbreviation is autonomous, connected, electric, and shared. You know, that's missing. And I think that's something that we've been talking about for a long time. The technology is already here. It's just the infrastructure that's not there, and we are not making it implemented to make it work. So I was wondering, is there somewhere here at whatever level, state level, federal level? I'm happy if it's any level.
Yes, yes.
But we should put it as a priority.
The language that you see in the existing legislative or the legislative agenda in front of you, the proposed 2025, is consistent with last year. However, you are absolutely correct. You saw that language in the federal legislative agenda, where it does reference, let's see, managing growth and improving safety by leveraging technology to enhance and optimize transportation systems. There is certainly an opportunity for us to continue advocating in Olympia for not only the smart mobility project, but also helping to plan for shared-use mobility, autonomous vehicles, electric vehicles, and data management. I feel that we have plenty of language in this existing legislative agenda that we could advocate for that. But I certainly am open to any feedback that you have for us.
Yeah, I think that'd be good to not to visit, because people tend to interpret that way. It's not included. They say, wow, maybe it's fallen off your agenda. So I think it doesn't hurt to be there. That includes your charging station, all that stuff, the whole infrastructure that would get us to the point that we actually have a real viable system. So I would recommend it doesn't hurt to be visible. So basically, you know, that includes actually Vision Zero. You know, safety is part of it, right? To be autonomous, to be autonomous, smart, you actually talk about the whole system. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think, kind of like the example that Katie mentioned earlier about the RAP Act, this present, this 2025 draft legislative agenda tries to steer away from making lists of examples and instead talks about smart mobility. Smart mobility, the way that we want to carry it, is an umbrella that all of ACES, autonomous, connected, electric, and shared, it all nests under smart mobility. And so it gives us the direction, your direction, to go and promote and advocate for those things. We can enumerate them out if the council feels like it's important, but absolutely, these are important issues to us. That's why they are on the federal agenda. We can do that if you all want us to, but I just want to give you our assurance.
Thank you. I think we agree. We're on the same page. But my feeling is that if we have it as an overall goal, it doesn't hurt to include it, repeat it. Otherwise, people would misinterpret, oh, maybe you have dropped it, right? I mean, this question in people's mind, and so we might lose it just by accident inadvertently. Doesn't hurt to be there, as long as it's not contradictory to our own priorities. So I appreciate that's a good thing to do. So thank you. If you can do that, that'd be good. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Zion?
Yes, thank you. I join my colleagues, and thank you guys for taking that extra time to work on this. I really like the format and the strategic target areas. It's much easier for us to figure out where the things that we're talking about lives in here, to be able to find it easily, because there's so many in here. With that said, I know you do your magic. The affordable housing looks a little bit like a footnote sitting over there. So as you package this, making sure it doesn't like blend in as like a little box versus one of the priorities, I think will be important. I also appreciate the fact that, you know, as we've talked about the budget, we have sometimes thrown a ball over there saying, hey, can you make sure that you're putting this in the ask? And I was able to identify all of those, so thank you for, you know, hearing us and putting that in. Also appreciate aligning with the partners. So I see things in here where I hear partners from like the school district saying, we really want to focus on special ed, so that's what's in there, and a number of other areas. And also your thoughtful choice of words to enable us to say yes when our partners say, hey, we want to lobby for something, we can also say yes, because we haven't been so overly prescriptive that we wouldn't be able to also align with them for advocacy, so I appreciate that. I do have two questions, and I think one of them, I'm hearing it from my other colleagues as well, and I'm kind of packaging it as a smart cities. So I'm hearing it from a smart transportation and mobility. But when I think about AI and how we look at digital permitting and technology, I wonder if there's a broader bucket called smart cities that then digital permitting and some of the other things in here. Because I actually wonder if the sentence about AI on page four under economic and workforce development, that's also governance, right? And how we do our work of leveraging edge computing and generative AI to drive transformative city services. So I don't know that it's really confined to economic and workforce development so much as kind of holistically how we might do business as a smart city. So I'd like to get your thoughts on, do you think it should still live there? Is there a choice of words we can somehow lift up smart cities as one of our guiding vision and principles? I didn't think about it before until I was listening to my colleagues, or I would have given it to you earlier.
We are both looking at previous language and previous agendas to see if there's some language that we can pull from, making your jobs easier to approve. Genesi, I will just mention that many of the, all of these have had review by department directors or their legislative staff. So I feel comfortable in what we have in front of you would allow us the flexibility to weigh in on legislation like that. It's incumbent, I think, on you all as a council to determine whether we should include that language. And I'm glad that Genesi is looking at perhaps something.
I just feel like it maybe captures some of the essence of what I was hearing from my colleagues about just the fact that Bellevue, we do lean into a vision as a smart city that's more than just smart mobility and transportation, so.
Actually, you know, I have an idea. And my idea, and perhaps, Genesi, I'm stepping on your toes. What you may have noticed in the state policy statement is some italicized language about how Bellevue works internally and how we represent ourselves externally. And much of this language is taken from the strategic target areas directly. I did a little wordsmithing to make it applicable to a state legislative audience. But I'm actually wondering if we can adjust some of the language in some of the italicized portions, either under high-performance government or under vibrant economy that might bring in smarts, the smart cities and...
Yeah, it's, I think if I can jump in right on that, I think... Yeah, it's, I think if I can jump in right on that, I think we haven't spelled out in the last, the only document we don't have a hard copy of up here are the STAs themselves.
Oh, I do.
Do you?
I do.
Go to the, go to the tab.
You know, is this, is this important to put in here? Are we missing something if we don't put it in? Because honestly, I'm not feel, if I, I don't know if I feel comfortable constructing this on the fly like this. So I wonder if we need to delay approval of this so that you can craft a recommendation for us?
One second. Let me just get an answer. I think, I think that we, if you can entrust us to do it in that high-performance government area, up in the italicized words, I think that's where it kind of lives.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. I think we can do that, and I think we will look to the STAs and that language that you all have already kind of ratified and approved, and, and lift directly from there, because that is, that does have a number of kind of a kit of parts inside of it that would be fine for us to incorporate in there, and we'll just use language that comes over from the STAs.
Councilmember Stokes had a comment.
Yeah, I think that's, it's, actually, smart cities is something, SCA and AWC, I mean, it's, it's something that's been out there quite a bit, not necessarily in transportation and things, but, but it's, it's, you have, I think you have to watch, it's not just a, a word that people jump at, so it has to have some meaning to it. But it is, it is, it seems to be something that helps, that people oriented to it, so I'm fine with, you know, I think you'll do a good job of...
Okay.
On that, thank you.
Thank you. So, are you still commenting? Okay, go ahead.
So do we leave the innovations with AI in that section under economic and workforce development, or is it more of...
Yeah, I think so, because that's more specific. So I think we leave that, and then we lift, excuse me, we lift up the smart cities approach and tools up into the kind of italicized statement up above in high-performance government. But I think we leave AI where it is, especially because we've seen a lot of state legislation around AI. We have seen less state legislation about some of the other components of smart cities work, but AI, we know, has been a hot topic over the last couple of years.
Okay. And then the only other question I had is, still on economic and workforce development, the second bullet about small business. When we talk about resources to support, does that also include small business loans? Because I'm also hearing that perhaps some of those small business loans, the terms could be adjusted to be more attractive to really support small business. And, and so I just wonder if within that sentence, it's broad enough to encapsulate kind of revamping of small business loans to make them more attractive to support small business.
My staff recommendation is that, yes, it would be encompassing enough. However, I, this perhaps is a presentation for early January, when we share a bit more about how we review legislation and how we determine whether it meets and, and fits within the legislative agenda. So I do think that this statement is broad enough to capture that, but it doesn't mean that we would automatically support it, we'd want to review it, find out how it, what the implications are for Bellevue and our residents and the businesses within Bellevue.
Okay, great. Everything else I have is in there. Thank you.
Thanks.
To wrap up, I'll just say, you know, it's interesting, we, one of our biggest challenges coming up is our infrastructure replacement. And talking to other cities, everybody's having the same challenges. I met with the consul general from New Zealand, and they said that their entire country is having to have the infrastructure replaced right now. And so she didn't say every city, she said our whole country. And I feel like our whole country is in the same boat, and this is a federal problem. This should not be individual cities' problems. So I know we're talking about the state agenda, but I think we need to kind of rephrase all our, the way that we look at requests for infrastructure funding.
Just, Mayor, I don't want to, I know we've taken up our share of time, but I do, I want to just underscore what you've said. It is absolutely the case, that observation, it is part of why we have worked at the regional level through various committees, as well as through the AWC Priorities Committee, with Councilmember Nguyen House's help, to elevate very specifically and explicitly how it is not Bellevue's problem. It's not even, you know, King County's problem. It is all of our problem, because we share the same resources and infrastructure constraints and a lack of funding tools, both in terms of grants and loans, and why we elevated to a priority in our most recent federal agenda, the need for water and wastewater infrastructure, and why we went to NLC and said, hey, this is really a shared problem across the country, and it is absolutely critical that we create basically a, a raise grant program, a really huge infrastructure program for that type of infrastructure that doesn't exist right now. There are lots of great low-interest loan programs, those are good too, but we absolutely have to invest in revitalizing and rebuilding infrastructure. We've got through the IRA and through the infrastructure bill, we really have made huge investments in a lot of things, particularly transportation, also housing, and other different, like the Chips and Science Act. But in a lot of that basic kind of meat and potatoes infrastructure, those tools are not there yet. So yes, we want to join with our partners to continue to elevate it. It's still not enough, so there's a lot more work to do. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to make kind of a vague motion here, because we've alluded to some amendments, but you, I saw that you wrote them down.
I am the master of making vague motions.
All right. Let's do it.
I moved to adopt the state legislative, legislative agenda as amended during this meeting, including adding autonomous vehicle statement and adding highways, four or five master plan, as Councilmember Nguyen House mentioned, also adding something about the smart city, as Councilmember Zahn mentioned.
In the, in this, in the strategic action target areas.
Right.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, before John jumps up, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll come back.
And they will join John in the presentation of the high-performance government strategic target area. So with that, John.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. We'll go ahead and jump in. Tonight is information only again. We are sharing information with you and are taking in questions. We will, as we have in previous evenings, see if there are quick answers to things, but we will take a liberal use of the memory bank and get questions collected and answered as quickly as possible as we go through. Excuse me. All right. Our calendar, we'll talk a little bit of calendar, the high-performance government, and then move into thriving people and communities. As we've discussed, we've had our July 9th public hearing was the initiation of our process. September 17th, the preliminary budget was presented. On September 24th, the second public hearing was discussed. We are currently in that learning and deliberation phase, driving towards November 12th, which will be our third and final public hearing, leading to a potential or tentative adoption date of November 19th. Here we are on our roadmap. We are in the third night of these discussions, and as we move into high-performance government, I am joined by two of my colleagues. And again, information only. If you're following along at home or in your books, it is operating section 4Q and capital section 5J, as well as in the Capital Explorer. As we look at the overall investment, this is about $317.6 million, or 18% of our budget, about $42 million of which is capital investment program, about $268.2 million is the base, and about $7.4 million is proposed in adjustments. This particular strategic target area involves almost every single one of our departments, whether we're outwardly focused or inwardly focused. With that, Joy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. As directors of internal service departments, we want to highlight that a well-managed government is essential to achieving your vision for Bellevue and delivering exceptional city services. Valuing our employees and their contributions and treating each other with caring and respect is at the heart of being a high-performance government, as it fosters a culture of collaboration and innovation. Tonight, we'll be presenting our proposed investments for 2025 and 2026, which are designed to enhance Bellevue's work culture and ensure that we can effectively advance the council's vision and serve our community with excellence. So, put it back to John.
Thank you. As we look at the investments within this particular area, key things, as we've had our theme, is focusing on maintaining our current assets. Major investments in our municipal buildings, like in our fire stations we've discussed previously, but here at City Hall and Bellevue Service Center, fire alarms and generators are at their end of life and need replacement. Repaving at the Bellevue Service Center as we wrap up the work, or when we get to wrapping up the work from electrification, fuel tank replacement, and then beginning the EV charging infrastructure here at City Hall. For City Hall remodel, we're beginning that process again. We're at a building half-life. It's a 75-year building, we're at about 40 years into the building's life. We're looking at some work, One, One West, where Development Services is located, doing some pilot space, and starting to figure out how do we do all the work of shifting throughout the building and improving those systems. At the same time, we'll be doing a larger planning and design effort for the remaining portion of City Hall and working forward, and then we've got some interim space that works with that. As we've discussed on a few different occasions, we have, we're embarking on a long-range plan for the city, for our facilities and services. Going through that process, it's actually underway now, and we've got some small investment added in for the next cycle, which will help us develop that 20- to 30-year services and facility horizon to develop the funding schemes that go with it. When it comes to municipal sustainability, we're investing in lead clean fuels, our incentive programs, our compliance with the Clean Building Act, and our greenhouse gas emissions and wedge analysis update for our municipal side of the equation. We're also doing a little bit of investment in our performance and business intelligence, maturing the work that we do in performance, moving forward to speed our work from, going from just reviewing data, but moving into insights and action, and working on developing key performance indicators that really help our leadership and our organization pull the right levers to improve our, our performance.
We're also proposing new investments in innovation with a goal of working alongside technology companies and partners in the community to think about how we can drive more inclusive innovation across the city. The goal of this work is to increase our capacity to support digital equity across all three legs of that triangle, from connectivity to skills to equipment. It's also to help advise staff on priorities for innovation, policies that we might bring to you to make some of those partnerships easier, and then to augment partnerships where we have folks in the community that are anxious to work with the city of Bellevue on some of the priorities that actually came out from you all in the last presentation. Thank you.
And that wraps up our presentation on the high-performance government, and we're happy to answer and collect questions.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. I'm going to start with Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You know, we have a long history here of maintaining what we build and buy, and so I'm glad to see that that commitment is emphasized here. So looking at City Hall, long-range facilities planning, that seems really smart. Glad to see support for our business intelligence team. Glad to actually see that we have such a team, so I think that's awesome. Equally thrilled that we have been able to come up with some funding for our new innovation forum. That seems clever. Really optimistic that we'll get a great return on that, so I think all of that looks really good to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, that was concise. I like that.
Once in a while.
That was awesome. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, all of you, for being here. I just have one question, and is perfectly fine if you put it for memory bank. Overall, the budget address immediate infrastructure needs that we have, but there are long terms that I, and long-term fiscal strategies that I don't see it here. I just wanted to know, are we planning for the long-term needs, and how are we trying to find some funding for the long-term need for the, long-term fiscal sustainability, basically? So just put it for memory bank.
Actually, really short answer. The long-range planning effort that we have, $250,000 support in this budget, tees up and sets up the prioritization so we can develop funding schemes over the next couple of biennia to get to that place.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Appreciate this. This is good. As mentioned, it's just beginning to develop a strategy, which is good, yeah. So that means we are getting on top of it. I have a question. You mentioned this by passing. The City Hall is 40-year, this City Hall is not 40-years-old.
The building is 40-years, council member. We've been here for 20-years.
But when we bought this building, we did it, it's, we, didn't we sort of did the whole thing?
There was remodel that was done to the facilities, but now it's, as every building has systems that need upgrading, we're at 40-years in any, any facility's life, it's time to look at how you replace and update those systems.
So it's part of the assessment you'd be doing for the $200,000. Thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Stokes, very concise, Councilmember Lee. Thank you.
Well, I think this is, we're getting to the end of a very, very positive and, and looking forward budget and everything going on, and I think the conference plan update and Bellevue look forward are, I think, in my opinion, well, ready to go. We, you know, we, this roadmap we have is a key to a clear vision for our community, and this is what we've all been doing, and it's really come together. And it's, it's interesting, and I think quite uncommon to have a meeting like we had tonight and come up to the ending and put it all together like this. The city, this city welcomes growth and innovation, and adoption of this legislation lets us go forward to capitalize on critical partnerships and investments we made in Wilberton, Bell Red, citywide, to move people, be home to people, and create a welcome and prosperous opportunity for all our residents. We talk all about the plans, the buildings and everything else, but when it comes down to it, this is what we're working for, and I think we're accomplishing that in a very good way. So I'm, I'm ready to go on this.
Great. Again, very concise, and I thank you. I, I have nothing more to say than my colleagues haven't already said. I'm a huge fan of this, and I've appreciated all the briefings that we've had and the opportunity to talk and use the memory bank for the questions, so this seems like a good process. Councilmember Nguyen House.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I too will be brief. Great, great presentation, focused on all the right things, and I just want to share how excited I am about the innovation forum, so I want to call it Sabra and our deputy city manager, Joe Todd, on this as well. But this is very exciting, much needed. I think it further puts us on the map as a city of technology and innovation. In fact, something I just mentioned earlier about autonomous vehicles, what a great thing to maybe partner with someone locally to explore that, as well as the many other things that we could possibly do with the right community partners to address transportation, digital equity, and, and a whole host of other issues. So very excited about this, but no, no questions, and ready to move forward on this as well. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Okay, so not quite as brief as my colleagues. I'm just going to start with that. But I just love the fact that we lifted high performance as the first strategic target area, because that is the, very much the foundation that everything else is built on, so thank you for that. You know, I, I think about what you've put in here, it's about the facility and asset management, the very systems that we use, and the people recruiting and retaining. So I, I did have, I guess, one or two questions for each of you, if that's okay. So Joy, I'm not really sure this is yours, or maybe Diane's, but as I think about these pieces, I think about our own city's return to work and where we are, because that goes into facility needs and planning, so maybe... So maybe that is more of just a general question as I think about these other pieces. So, John, when I think about the City Hall space planning, I guess one of my asks would be that, you know, we really reimagine what having, this is the people's house. And so how we might think about any redesign or revamping that would make this place more open and available and accessible to the community and programming would be important to me. And then my question, since you put in there something about municipal stewardship, is our budget on track to meet our municipal greenhouse gas goals by 2030? Or can you help us understand if it's not, then what kind of funding and investment would be needed or what we think we can get to based on the current budget that's in there? And then on the EV charging, are we anticipating getting IRA tax credits for that effort? So we have to spend the money first, but we're getting that money back. And love the performance dashboard, John, so thank you for that. I think that'll be really important. For Sabra, love the innovation. I think that you actually are a walking example of smart city and innovation, so thank you for that. We've been recognized for that. With that said, you know, I think most of you know that in my day job at the port, we had a cyber security and a ransomware attack. So I would like to understand whether you feel like you have sufficient funds to ensure that we have a strong cyber security as possible, and if not, is there some funds that we could help with that? And then lastly, on the digital equity, whether there's any additional system upgrades that would help our staff be even more efficient and effective at digital equity? So some comments and questions, and maybe it all goes in the memory bank, but just let me know.
We will add those to the memory bank. You've actually got a couple of complex pieces within that, and so we'll get you answers there.
Okay, thank you.
Terrific. So shall we move on to the next?
And Louise, can you do that?
Thriving People and Communities.
All right, moving on to Thriving People and Communities. Joining us is Michael Shiosaki, Director of Parks and Community Services. Tony Esparza will be joining us as I step back after I do the intro to get the team up here, and she's the Assistant Director of Parks and Community Services. Dr. Whitehead, Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer, and Bianca Segal, Assistant Director of Citywide Priorities and Policy Development. All right. Again, we are in an information-only, providing you with information and seeking questions so we can help inform you as you go into your deliberations. If you're following along at home, Operating Section 4V and Capital Section 5O and the CIP Project Explorer. As we think about the investments in this area, it represents about 6% of our budget, or about 98.4 million, of which about 4.4 million is capital improvement program. 87.9 million is the base, and 6.1 million are proposed adjustments. This area involves the City Manager, Human Resources, Parks and Community Services, Community Development, and Utilities. And with that, we'll start with community engagement and multicultural gathering.
Good evening. This budget includes some resources to advance the council's priorities around community engagement. It funds a one-city effort to be led by the Community Development Department, representing them this evening, and would focus on supporting citywide outreach and community engagement for major city initiatives. That program would focus on five things: consistency and standardization of best practices for outreach, broadening connections and outreach to historically marginalized or underrepresented communities, strengthening city transparency and consistency of reporting on our community input that we receive, and then assembling some new tools for citywide data management to collect a range of community survey data to help inform future city decision-making.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. The cultural events in Bellevue, in 2025, '26, we're going to sort of change our approach. The city will be taking a community-led, city-supported approach to the celebration of cultural events and heritage events. The strategy is actually echoed in our cross-cultural project, well, Cross-Cultural Center Without Walls, where the community has been taking the lead and is being supported by the city. Rather than the city being the lead entity on the cultural events, we want the community to take the lead. A good example of that is our International Festival. It was our very first, which was hosted in August. We had 13 partners, Amazon being one of those major partners. That event was very successful. If you look at the number of people, the foot traffic, we had over 500 people to attend over a four-hour period. We also had 21 countries represented. We had over 18 performers. Now, to bring just a little humor at this late time, we had five out of our seven continents present at that event, so it was a whole lot of fun that day. Also, in September, joined with Bellevue Diversity Advisory Network, we had our Resource Fair. We had over 30 partners to participate in that. So once again, look at the common thread: community-led, city-supported. Our cross-cultural centers without walls have been very successful. This is our pilot year. Thus far, we've had eight events. We have a total of 19, and we actually had 50 organizations to apply for those dollars. The cross-cultural without walls, we have been excited with that particular project. The projects will go from now to May of 2025. And the second round, if the funding is approved, we will have a second year of the cross-cultural project without walls. So far, the cross-cultural project programming completed in 2024 has shown a continued and consistent demand for cross-cultural engagement opportunities. We have seen a growing network of potential cross-cultural partners as these events have been very successful, and word of mouth has truly gotten out that the city is very committed to supporting community participation. We've had, the biggest challenge, of course, has been housing as to where the events will be. We've become very creative. We've had one event with Crossroads Church and their auxiliary gym. We also have the use of Bellevue College, several of their classrooms and their small auditorium. And the last, most recently, was Master Builders here in the city. They offered us their conference room. So the challenge is with the housing, but we have definitely stepped up to that challenge. Now, this is the part that is also very interesting because it's what's to come. In addition to continuing with the cross-cultural programming, we will be simultaneously completing a site analysis for a possible cross-cultural center with walls. That's the exciting piece. A preliminary site analysis was completed in 2019 and 2020, through the cross-cultural feasibility study. However, there have been significant development and changes in the availability of city-owned properties since then. The new site analysis would also take into consideration the information included in the final 2022 cross-cultural feasibility study in addition to learning from the Cross-Cultural Center Without Walls pilot program. The goal of this analysis will be to provide city leadership with current information on the financial costs and citing opportunities of a cross-cultural facility.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Within Parks and Community Services, both recreation and human services portions of the organization play key roles in helping build an equitable and caring community as a part of this strategic target area. So first, in looking back, here are several of the key recreation-focused accomplishments over the last two years, and I'll just quickly breeze through them. So in 2024, our adaptive recreation day camps for youth were full with long waiting lists, and the number of youth with disabilities participating in general recreation day camps increased by more than 30%. So, as you may know, Parks and Community Services, we chair the Special Events Committee, and the Special Events Committee is responsible for reviewing applications for special event permits and setting conditions for events to help make sure they're safe and quality. We've seen just impressive growth in the number of large special events held over the past year in the city, and some examples of these include the Pacific Northwest Youth Expo in Downtown Park, the Holy Festival of Color, the Juneteenth Community Celebration, the Bellevue International Festival, all at Crossroads International Park. So to allow for equitable use for pickleball and tennis players, a shared-use pilot program was launched this summer, and this included sports courts at both East Gate and Lakemont Parks. And each sport had a scheduled block of time in each site, and the schedules alternated daily between the two sites. And the feedback we've received, it's been very successful in kind of sharing these sites, and we hope to have other pairs of sites for a pilot this next year. Through a grant from the county, the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy awarded a grant to North Bellevue Community Center to support a service hub for older adults that provide additional programs and services for older adults at North Bellevue and other community centers. And lastly, excuse me, for 2024, summer day camp demand far exceeded capacity. For some of our day camps, the total waitlist were about 3,100 people for those camps that were the most popular. So definitely, they continue to grow very much. So the proposed budget includes funding to add recreation staff to support community recreation programs and extend operating hours at community centers. As shown on the graph, the demand for recreation programs is increasing dramatically. So next up is human services. So we will be sharing the funding recommendations from the Human Services Commission. Throughout 2023 and '24, the council recognized the upcoming end of one-time federal aid and the difficulty this would bring in the 2024-25 funding cycle. The council adopted strategic guidance to inform the commission's recommendations. And, excuse me, Tony Esparza will walk you through the commission's process and provide an overview of their recommendations. Tony?
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. So as Michael mentioned, the council made historic investments into human services throughout the pandemic with one-time federal aid. As Bellevue, along with many other jurisdictions, faces the spin-down of pandemic funding, council instructed the development of the city's first-ever strategic plan for human services to provide policy guidance on how to strategically invest the city's dollars in the face of rising community need. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. He asked me if I wanted to click, and then I forgot. This policy guidance, coupled with data from the Human Services Needs Update, informed the commission's funding recommendations. The strategic plan also called for the development of a dashboard to provide increased understanding to the public of the outputs and outcomes from the city's investments into the human services infrastructure. A 2023 dashboard is now published. This data was also shared with the commission as they formed funding recommendations to demonstrate good stewardship of city resources. In past conversations about human services funding, council has emphasized the importance of building relationships with new human services agencies, including our trusted messengers, and also emphasized the importance of increasing access to city funding for these agencies. These priorities are reflected in the strategic plan and were implemented by staff. Staff increased outreach, published our RFP in the city's top eight languages, and made technical assistants available to any interested agency during the funding process. The city received 154 applications for funding. To equip the commission for the review process, the commission increased their understanding of need through panel presentations from providers, presentations on data from the Needs Update, and a review of the new dashboard that details investments into human services. As with past funding cycles, all individuals participating in the review of proposals participated in an equity training to increase understanding and application of equity principles in dialogues and formation of recommendations. And this year, for the first time, additional community members were involved in the proposal review process as was directed in the Human Services Strategic Plan. The Bellevue Diversity Advantage Network, Centering Communities of Color Initiative, and Youth Link were invited to participate in a one-day retreat with the commission to review applications. The commission then continued their review during subsequent meetings, and the commission formed the final funding recommendations. And as they have historically done, the commission also developed recommendations for any potential added funding. These recommendations have helped the city in the past immediately apply new funding without delay as the commission has already provided recommendations. The preliminary budget invests $16.8 million into human services infrastructure from several sources: the Human Services Fund, the Housing Stability Program, Community Development Block Grant, and a one-time investment of an additional $2.5 million. I'll provide a high-level overview of each funding source, beginning with the Human Services Fund. Since 2002, the growth of the Human Services Fund has been based on a formula which includes inflation and a 1% population growth increase. The commission's recommendations for these funds address the most significant gaps and disparities in human services for Bellevue residents as directed by the strategic plan. Community Development Block Grants, or CDBG, are federal funds with strict criteria guiding their investment. The commission's recommendations for these funds align with this criteria and include microenterprise assistance, the city's home repair program, which helps low- and moderate-income residents make important repairs that allow them to stay in a safe, stable home, and a small percentage of these funds go to more broad human services. The funding for behavioral health and housing-related services comes from the city's Housing Stability Program. The council adopted a framework directing the use of the revenues collected for this program. Within that framework, 15% is allocated for specific behavioral health and housing-related services. And in line with other human services funding sources, the request for these dollars also exceeds available funding. The Human Services Commission had a daunting job in forming their recommendations in the face of significant community need. The details of their process are outlined in the transmittal letter from the Human Services Commission Chair, which is Attachment B in your packet, and I do believe our chair has logged in online, along with probably several of our other commissioners who worked very hard through this process. Their recommendations are directly informed by policy and data, and their recommendations support this council priority to meet community needs and increase equitable access and outcomes. I will also summarize the policy guidance from the Human Services Strategic Plan. You don't have to read all the details on this slide. Policy in the strategic plan calls for prioritizing investments in the areas of greatest disparity rather than trying to spread funds thinly over all areas, increasing equitable access to funding for agencies meeting the needs and disparities for marginalized residents, and expanding access to culturally and linguistically specific human services. Under that policy guidance, data indicated that the following four service areas and two populations are the areas of greatest disparity for our residents, and thus the places for recommendations for deeper investments. The first service area, shelter, housing, and housing stability. In the Needs Update, this was identified as the top area of community need. Next, food and basic needs. Data shows a growing number of households in need of food benefits and an increasing number of children in the Bellevue School District who qualify for free and reduced-priced lunches. Childcare: only 38% of households in the Needs Update could find childcare in their community. And behavioral health in this service area was among the top three needs identified by the community, with the others being housing and support to address discrimination and racism. The two populations experiencing the biggest gaps. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. Sorry. Sorry. The two populations experiencing the biggest gaps and disparities in access to services are residents in need of culturally and linguistically-specific services and youth. These populations intersect with the service areas I just named, as residents across all demographics need access to shelter, housing, food, basic needs, childcare, and behavioral health. The first population is residents in need of culturally and linguistically-specific services. In the Needs Update, only 43% of residents reported inability to access services that met their cultural and language needs. And two of the top three barriers to service included a lack of culturally-appropriate services and a lack of language-appropriate services. For youth, data indicated that the most critical gaps in access to services for youth were in the areas of childcare and behavioral health. In order to develop funding recommendations for specific funds and specific amounts, the commission took several steps. Each commissioner was tasked with reading all 154 applications, which amounts to more than 1,500 pages of reading. They included details about the agency, the specific program, and intended service units and outcomes. The commission considered the policy and data that I just reviewed. They also considered the input they received from panel presentations from community members and providers, and the input of the additional community members who attended the Saturday retreat. The commission also had the difficult task of balancing requests that far exceeded available funds, and all of this then contributed to the commission's recommendations. Full details can be found in Attachment C and D in your packet. Attachment C includes the total recommendations for each program from all funding sources, and Attachment D includes a breakout by funding source. For the Human Services Fund, Housing Stability, and CDBG, it does not include the one-time funding. The recommendations for CDBG are based on an estimate of anticipated revenue, so Attachment E details how adjustments would be made should CDBG funding revenues be higher or lower than current estimates. While the 24-2030 Human Services Strategic Plan is only a few months old, we can begin to analyze how the council's guidance has made an impact on the commission's funding recommendations. The slide I just reviewed identified these four service areas as the data-informed areas of the most significant gaps and disparities. The dollars on this slide do not include the one-time investment that we'll discuss later. These priority service areas are recommended for 10.9 million or 76% of funds available, which furthers the strategic plan guidance to expand equity-focused and data-driven decision-making, addressing significant community needs, and prioritizing investments in the areas of greatest disparity. We can also begin early analysis on how the 24-2030 strategic plan made an impact on the commission's funding recommendations for the populations of Bellevue's residents that experienced the greatest gaps and disparities. Keep in mind, again, that these population details can be overlaid onto the prior-slide service areas as these populations access those services. And again, these investment areas do not include the one-time funding. Each of these investment amounts represents a slight increase from the 23-24 investments with only city funds, contributing to the council's priority of increasing equitable access and outcomes. The commission's recommendations for culturally and linguistically-specific support support the priority in the adopted strategic plan of expanded access for this type of services. There is an important clarification to be made that all of our contracted partners are required to offer services to all-income qualifying Bellevue residents, and all contracted partners are monitored to ensure compliance with contract requirements and good stewardship of city investments. The benefit of the city's investment into culturally and linguistically-specific services is that we are addressing a gap that the community identified and adding expanded expertise in response to these needs. But in a broader context, as our community advances equity and more providers come to the table as trusted messengers, the ask for funding from these agencies have not been as large as other agencies. Thus, the level of funding being recommended is still somewhat small by comparison, 3.5 million of the total capacity. The other population identified as having significant gaps were services to youth. Approximately 25% of all funding is recommended for services that are specifically for youth, but keep in mind, youth are supported through many other programs within the recommendations as well, such as rent assistance and food that support entire households. So the impacts on Bellevue youth will be far-reaching across the commission's recommendations. And last, the preliminary budget includes the exciting recommendation for $2.5 million in one-time funding to help address the most significant gaps and disparities after the spin-down of pandemic funding, and we're excited to have the opportunity to discuss investment of those dollars with you. As part of our Human Services Commission's thorough and data-informed review process, the commission not only develops recommendations for established funding sources, but they also develop recommendations for any potential added funding. Those recommendations include specific amounts for specific programs, just like the others. This has been a longstanding practice and was also an element of the commission's deliberations this year, and all recommendations were informed by the same policy and data as the rest of the commission's recommendations. As I mentioned, in the past, the commission's recommendations for added funding have enabled the city to immediately allocate new funding without delay, as the recommendations were already prepared. This was especially useful during the pandemic, when there were multiple new funding sources. The commission's 25-26 recommendations for adding funding as a consideration for council could be applied for the additional $2.5 million. So with that in mind, as the council considers the allocation of this investment, I'll share the commission's adopted recommendations for added funding for your consideration. The preliminary budget recommends that 2/3 of the $2.5 million go towards the most significant gaps and disparities in youth services. As I mentioned, data indicates that these are youth, behavioral health, and childcare. Within youth, behavioral health, and childcare, the commission has offered recommendations for specific programs and amounts that the council could choose to use to guide these investments. The commission also recommended that shelters and housing providers be funded first with any added funding. Thus, their recommendations would direct the remaining 1/3 to shelters and housing providers. The commission also made recommendations for specific programs and amounts that could be used to guide those investments. The commission also adopted recommendations for specific agencies and amounts in other service areas. Should the council choose to allocate the one-time $2.5 million using the commission's adopted recommendations, staff would have clear guidance for allocation. In closing, I want to thank the staff that are in the room. We have a great contingency from the Human Services Division, the representatives from BDan, Centering Communities of Color, and Youth Link that gave up their time to add their voice, and thank the commission, who I believe many are online. But I most want to thank the council for prioritizing human services needs, for providing policy guidance for this very difficult process, and for consideration of an additional investment in response to the growing needs of residents. And I'll pass it to Bianca Segal.
This is the last slide of this part of the presentation. Happy to be here, again, talking about the homelessness outreach program, which provides direct services to community members experiencing homelessness and partners with local and regional entities to move forward several initiatives. The budget, as proposed, supports the homelessness response in a number of key ways. First, by maintaining staff to provide direct outreach services. And this is staff who are in the field on a regular basis, supporting our unhoused residents in accessing temporary shelter and permanent housing when it's available, as well as providing encampment response and resolution. Funds also address immediate needs for outreach clients, so food, hand warmers during the winter, document fees for obtaining IDs and other necessary information, sometimes minor vehicle repairs to help folks access jobs to assist them in moving out of homelessness. It provides for some additional supports during severe weather response, as it's getting colder outside tonight. That's something that we will anticipate using in the near future. And then also provides a little funding for us to participate in a shared outreach data system with our immediate neighbors in Redmond and Kirkland, so that outreach staff can better coordinate client response. As the outreach program has evolved over the last four years, we have been able to increase the number of individuals that we serve, and so far this year, that's been almost 450 unhoused individuals within the city. In the last six months, the team has also addressed 21 encampment resolutions across our neighborhoods. The budget also provides funding to continue the Pilot Safe Parking Program, should the council elect to do so, through the end of 2026. The Safe Parking Program, as you might recall, launched earlier this spring. To date, it's served 31 households. That is 43 adults and 72 children. These are all families with children living in vehicles who are served by the program currently. 12 of those 31 have already been moved into stable housing with the support of the case management with our operational partners at Safe Parking. We've had no reports of security or other incidents since the opening of the program. I know when the program launched, and we were talking about it previously, council was really interested in seeing data, and we will return to you with more detail on that once we hit the six-month mark of operations. And then we will also plan to discuss probably early in the new year with you, next steps for the program. The current contract can be extended by staff through June, and so anything beyond that will certainly involve discussion with all of you. And per comments from earlier this evening, we are also looking into the citing of the Safe Parking Program based on future intended uses for Lincoln Center.
And with that, we return back to you.
Thank you. Okay, great presentation. Appreciate you all being here tonight so late in the evening. Councilmember, first of all, let's, so we don't have to interrupt ourselves, let's extend the meeting to 10:15. Is there a motion to do that?
I make a motion to extend our meeting to 10:15.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's start with Councilmember Zahn as liaison to the Human Service Commission.
Yeah, well, thank you. Every one of these topics are so thoughtful, and I really appreciate all the hard work that, you know, staff, as well as the Human Services Commission put in and BDan and CCC into this. I was thinking about, when you said 1,500 pages of documents, that it's not easy to know that the number of the very worthwhile programs are not going to get the full funding, and in some cases, not any funding at all. And so just really appreciate that. Absolutely appreciate your comment about the supporting allocation of funding without delay. So having that one-time $2.5 million that's able to be dispersed within the grant cycle that we already are doing instead of outside of that, I think is really important. But actually, I think I'm going to start with the ones that maybe just are more comments, because I think the Human Services one is just a little more sticky. So thank you, Michael, for the increased recreation staff and hours. I think that's really important. I really like the community-led, city-supported, Lynda, for that. I guess for me, though, you know, it does go to how much funding is in here for opening up City Hall even more on the weekends and the community centers. So I would like to better understand how much funding is in there for that, and if we need a little bit more to have facilities open longer, what would that look like? Because I've certainly been to different ones where it's either really blazing hot, which is still nice, but super hot, or windy and nearly threatening, you know, pouring down rain. So I think that would be good to understand. I would also like to understand, love seeing how much more special events, Michael, that we're seeing. I do wonder about some modest investment for making sure that we have electricity and plugs instead of having to bring in generators and so many other things in order to support special events. So what does that look like, and is there already some funds in here for that? Related to the Communities of Color coordinating team, I'm wondering if there are some, an allowance of funds in here for their recommendations that we're going to get next year, or are we expecting that that would be part of a mid-buy to support the recommendations that come from CCC? Love everything we're doing with homelessness. Thank you, Bianca. And then back to Tony, I guess on the, really appreciate the additional $2.5 million. I would like to better understand whether the allocation of those dollars are in alignment with what the Human Services Commission came up with in terms of that allocation, because I guess what I wonder about is, in some regards, we need more funding, both for youth as well as for the culturally-specific organizations. And so I'm wondering, within the $2.5 million, are we able to meet the needs that came from the human services? Because I believe that their wish list was significantly more than the $2.5. Is that correct?
You are correct. Their wish list was, I believe, $4.8 million. They were, they did call it their dream column, as you might recall, Councilmember Zahn, because I know you were there for all of it. So do the recommendations fit within what they have? The recommendations, as provided in the transmitted preliminary budget, are fairly high-level, with just 2/3 going to youth and the other 1/3 going to other gaps left by ARPA funding. And so if you take that high-level guidance, it can be applied, if the council chooses, to the commission's recommendations and use the guidance they provided for added funding. So within youth, that would go to childcare and behavioral health, and they do have that. And then with the added 1/3, or the remaining 1/3, the commission had a series of recommendations, with the first being funding for shelters and housing, and so that remaining 1/3 could go to that. And of course, both of those categories could include our culturally and linguistically-specific providers.
Okay. And if we were to try to get to their wish list of 4.8, what are some options for funding that might be possible to get us there beyond the 2.5? And that's probably a memory bank question. But I do think it's important, because we have immediate needs today, because the wish list doesn't actually get to the fully-funded ask from all the different community organizations. And we know that part of the ask is that we're, they're also trying to pay the people providing the service a living wage, and so we want to be able to support that as much as possible. So I would like to understand that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Really great. I just love all that you're doing, and I, again, have to commend Councilmember Zahn for initiating the Safe Parking Program. It's just successful beyond my expectations, and I'm so grateful that we're doing this program when I hear the results of it. So thank you for your hard work on that. I know that a council passed a new strategic plan with objectives for the Human Service Commission to use with their grant process, but to be honest, those were principles we didn't ever discuss or really, it wasn't in the presentation when we had the presentation to approve the whole plan. So I would like to ask that you bring that back to us for next year, so that we can look at those principles a little more detail. And then the other thing is, so you've got excess of $1.25 million per year for the next two years, and you're proposing that 2/3 be directed to the categories and applicants benefiting services to youth, which I really appreciate. And I'm just going to underscore how important it is, I think, that we serve the youth of our community, because they're our future. So we're looking at a major preventative program when we put funding into our youth. And I think one of the statistics that really underscores that is, when you look at crime committed in Bellevue, hardly any of it is committed by residents of Bellevue, by the youth of Bellevue. And that, to me, means that we're doing a good job of directing kids and giving them the support and the mentoring and the leadership training to help them make good decisions as they grow up in our community. So I am interested in asking if our council would consider directing the remaining 1/3 of that funding, excess funding, to rental assistance programs that reduce the risk of homelessness for families with children. And that would, thank you, and that would supersede the Human Services Commission's idea. So I'm just going to let that marinate, and we can comment on it as we go. That was the only thing that I had, and I know Boost has emailed us and met with us and asked for additional funding, and I'd just like your thoughts on that, where that lies in the priorities.
Yes, thank you.
That's childcare.
So Boost has applied for CDBG funding.
Okay.
And we do anticipate a reduction from HUD in CDBG funding for 2025. That is, of course, outside of the city's control.
And why do you anticipate that?
Because of the conversations with our HUD representatives have indicated that they anticipate that. But the contingency plan, this Attachment E, would tell us what to do if we got more than anticipated. So we are anticipating, based on guidance that we have received, but have a backup plan should we get more. Boost is included. Boost is included in that. That is one example of the micro enterprise that is supported through CDBG funds. But there are also several others.
Okay, good. And it's not because we're not spending our money, because I know that's one way to lose those funds.
Correct. We have no unspent dollars moving forward.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thanks for the great presentation this evening. Just a couple of quick questions and comments, but overall, really appreciate where we're headed on this overall. I want to touch on a couple of different topics. So, events. I want to make sure, because as we've mentioned in our presentation tonight, and I don't think I'm the first council member to mention this, but we talk about the importance of events, culturally significant events, et cetera, et cetera. I want to make sure that we don't make it cost prohibitive for these events to happen in the future. Now, these might not be city-sponsored events, like the new one we just had recently, the successful one there in Crossroads Park. But, you know, other events that are conducted by nonprofits or youth-based events in our city. I just want to make sure that we don't see that as a profit center, but really encourage those types of events in our city, which I think is a priority of the city and of our council, to encourage that and create community around that. So that's one comment there. On the cross-cultural center, thank you, Dr. Whitehead. I feel like we're slowly getting to the point where we're finding, getting a little bit of teeth in the cross-cultural center in terms of a permanent physical one. I wish we were a little bit further along. This is something that my colleague, Councilmember Lee, has advocated for a long time. And, you know, I wish we were at 30% design or 30% of the way there for that, as it's been lingering for a while. And I know resources are limited, and we've got limited capacity or building space in order to do that. And I really appreciate you taking advantage as much as possible for the space that we can find, be it Bellevue College or what have you. But I think the vision is really not gonna be quite fulfilled until we have that actual physical space. So great to see that. On the safe parking lot, it looks some initial good results from that. I'm just curious, and maybe the timing just didn't add up, but in the budget, we're asking for, I think, close to half a million dollars to continue the program. But we really haven't seen an update yet on really digging in deeper into the specifics of the data of, is this truly working? And, I mean, you've given us a few, but there's many more. And I think you're waiting to do that until we get to that six-month point? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, we, yes, the six-month point is coming up shortly, and we would anticipate having that data back to you before the end of the year, certainly.
Before the end of the year. Okay, okay. Interesting. Okay, well, that's good. I'm glad we're gonna do that. Because I, you know, we want to make sure that we're contending to find it. It does sound like it. I'm not saying it's not, but it sounds like this program continues to do really, really good work. But I'd like to have it in that order before we sign off on the budget. Let's see, I had one more. I just gotta read my chicken scratches here. Actually, I think we're good for now. So thank you so much. And I really appreciate, Tony, your explanation, very thoughtful and thorough of, you know, having been the former liaison to the Human Services Commission. I know how difficult of a challenge that is each year, and it only increases in terms of the need versus what we actually have available to fund. And I really commend your, you know, the way you go about your job and the way the Human Services Commission does as well. I do like the proposal or the amendment, I guess we'll call it, from the mayor as well. I think that youth is extremely important in this city. And, you know, we have heard that data point time and time again, that, you know, that youth, if we address those issues with our youth now, it pays dividends in the future. And the great testimony from Tim Motz and other groups that are doing this really important and critical work. So really appreciate the mayor's comments on that as well. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
I mean, overall, I mean, we could go through the budget, and we could all have, say, it should be this instead of that. And there's never enough money. But my perception of this and working through it is that we are doing really a good job of hitting a spot that we can, that we can do. And we've increased it quite a bit. And it's, I think it's a roadmap that is key to having clear vision for our community. Going to it, and it really lays everything out. I like it that way. And, you know, we welcome growth and innovation and adoption of this legislation. Kind of lets us and the budget, you know, go forward and really capitalize on critical partnerships and investments we made in Wilburton, Bellred, and Citywide, and help move people or help people move around in the city, be home to people, create welcome and prosperous opportunity for all those kind of things. I think we're hitting really well in that. We can, we could have seven different viewpoints about should it be this place, this place, and this place. And we're asking good questions and, you know, this, and I think what we want to have is answers. But I have to say that, looking at this and knowing, working with the different boards and commissions and being with it, that the staff has done a tremendous job of looking at this and saying, this is what we can do. We can make promises. We could say we want to do it at this rate. But I think we're getting really professional questions and answers to this that goes forward. So I'm not, I don't want to really go through and kind of say, well, we really should be doing this or that. And if somebody, if we go through this and there's a clear one, I would be supportive of that. Otherwise, I think it's a really good budget, and I'm ready to go with it. But I'm also open to listen on what we could do differently. I would like to, the one thing that I have a concern with, and it's not any history, any, you know, what I'm trying to say. I think that I would like to see the cross-cultural building, what we're talking about, the number of people we will serve, what the need is, and how can one building work for this community when the need is really, really high? And I would like to be, come to a decision on it myself, and which would, what I think would be, hopefully, we all work together on what's best and how we can really serve more people in the needs, instead of just saying, we need a building here as opposed to these others and everything. So for me, that's something that I think is important, because I want to see this be successful in the long run and actually accomplish the goals. And so that's the one piece that I really see that still needs, for me, some conversation. But I think the whole thing is a really good job. And I, you know, and I agree with the mayor that we need more resources for our youth. We could go back and, any of these things, they're saying, say, well, we could add this here and this here and this here. And so that's a hard one.
This is extra money, so we're not, this is extra money.
I know, I know. But I'm just saying, it's a tough one. But I really think it's a very, very good job, and I appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to us getting it going and actually putting it in place.
I wonder if you might provide Councilmember Stokes with the results of the consultants' work, where they looked at having multiple sites for a cross-cultural center versus one site? Because I believe that was covered in the, in the report that they gave us.
Yeah, that would be good, to have that conversation. And like I said, I just, I, anyhow, you know what?
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address two pieces separately. The first piece first. Again, thank you for your presentation. There's a lot of stuff there. I mean, it's all very important. So first, I want to talk about a little bit easier one. I want to thank you, the staff, for the time you have spent over the last year supporting cross-cultural community programming with our community organizations, emphasizing the community-based organizations. I hear that the community asking the city to next step for securing a site or facility to be dedicated to supporting cross-cultural activities. And that's what the vision is. That's what I believe the council approved. We spent, you know, a couple of studies with consultants for a few years, and we came to that conclusion. So I'm pleased to see that there are funds in the preliminary design budget to move into site selection work. I think that's basically the follow-up of the next step. If I understand correctly, these funds will allow staff to evaluate multiple site options, which keeps up the momentum, and it's a concrete step forward. It's not just a stop looking at whether we should do it or not, but it's really continuation of the project that we, I think, the council supported and the public approved, and we expected to have. I look forward to getting more information about the work and the timeline after the first of the year. And I hope this $100,000 is adequate to do that. So I don't know whether, how did you get that $100,000, Dr. Whitehead, and the staff supporting you? So I would hope that it's similar to the, you know, the the cross-connection, you know, work we're doing.
Grand connection.
When you, yeah, grand connection. When you do a study, you must know how much you need to get to the result you want. So I hope that will be adequate. If we don't, I hope that we'll include in the budget so that can happen. So thank you for doing that, and I appreciate Councilmember Newhouse for reinforcing that, you know, our commitment. Second one, which I'd like to say a few words. I want to thank the Human Service Commission for what they do. That's a big, big, big topic. That's a topic City of Bellevue has been working for the last 30-some years. There's never enough money to take care of human service needs. I mean, we're lucky to fund 15%, you know, just touching the edges of what is really needed. There's application always coming in. We're not getting more application, because people know that we don't have enough money. But if we expect them to come in with more, we'd be flooded with so many we don't have. But they have done a real human job, you know, which the council don't have time to do it. So they've worked their tail off, looking at how many hours of reading the pages of applications, understanding the needs, and listening to the staff, and look at the data that you produce and the city council's suggestion, listening to the public, more importantly. And we have a dashboard, so we know what are the needs out there. And they do their great job. They're volunteers. So I think that's enough. We cannot meet completely. I also appreciate the city council sees other needs as well. For example, I agree 100%. Right now, at this moment, we need to have more money for youth. We need to have more money for childcare. We need to have more money for other things. But that's a separate thing. That's something that we need to commit by city council. We believe it's so important. We need to get additional funding, figure out how we can get more money, commit to those programs, and perhaps either figure out how to do it with nonprofits, with other organizations, so that we can meet those needs. Instead of asking the Human Service Commission, say, well, you have this much money to work with, but now you have to take care of what we want you to do.
No, that's not, Councilmember Lee.
Their job is, they do whatever they think is important.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you.
Can I clarify that we are talking not about the recommendations of the budget? There is a $2.5 million extra that we're trying to determine what to do with.
It's not, they just said that. It's not extra. It's not extra. There's no way the Human Service Commission has more money that we cannot spend. It's not.
Did anybody read the packet?
No, it isn't.
I'm gonna ask staff to maybe.
It's not extra.
Sure. So going into our review process each year, we're given some preliminary numbers to consider. So we're given a preliminary number for the Human Services Fund, because its estimates clear back in February. So they form recommendations against those preliminary numbers for the Human Services Fund, 1590 Housing Stability Program, I apologize, and CDBG. And then they also always say, and what if these numbers increase? What would our other recommendations be? And the city manager included in her preliminary budget an additional $2.5 million that was not based on the formula for the Human Services Fund. So I think some of the conversation tonight has been around how to apply that $2.5 million to use the commission's recommendations for it, or to, as you mentioned, the council also can see their own priorities. Councilmember Lee, I would add that we can follow up with you to get more detail about the additional funding.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. They can definitely go to memory bank for the sake of time, because Councilmember Hamilton has not spoken. There is a bigger difference in the agenda item. The ask was $36 million. The funding is $17 million. So my first question is kind of the same question as Councilmember Zahn and Lee. What are the opportunities that we can work with other organization, profit, nonprofit, or government entities that could help bridge the funding gap? So I would love to see that as an answer there. The other question I have, and I think that's kind of what Mayor is talking about. Has there been a cost, maybe, has there been a cost-benefit analysis that quantify the long-term benefits and potential cost-saving of fully funding human services needs for the city? It's one pocket. So for example, if we prevent homelessness, the rental assistance that the mayor mentioned, or if we prevent youth, and we prevent youth to go to the jail, and we do intervention, are the costs associated to those kind of intervention that is maybe fancier than just preventing? I know preventing needs original investment, and then we don't deal with the intervention cost. So I would love to see if there is some data to show us if what I'm saying is any accuracy. Thank you, Mayor.
I move that, can I have a motion to extend the meeting to 10:30? We can always end earlier.
I move to extend the meeting to 10:30.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilmember Hamilton.
Does that mean I have 15 minutes?
Yes.
You could add more if you need it.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, unfortunately, you know, this budget, we're constrained. But, you know, the more I see it, the more I like it, and the more I'm impressed with all of you for being strategic and impactful in creating it, especially at this challenging time. I think it's important to include funding for an improved coordinated approach to community engagement. Happy to see that. Our grants for the cross-cultural center without walls, of course, we need to do that. And then funding for the fourth phase of study to cite a future cross-cultural facility. Definitely in favor of that. Also appreciate the additional funding for the community recreation programs. Want to thank the Human Services Commission for all the work they've done. I mean, they have a very challenging job, and no matter how much we allocate, it's never enough. And that has just got to add to the challenge for all of them. So certainly appreciate that. They came back to us, you know, had a good process, produced very solid recommendations. Glad to see that we have $2.5 million in one-time funding for some additional needs. I think trying to fill the gap for youth is very smart, and using the rest, as the mayor suggested, for rental assistance funding is a great idea, and support that. And our continued funding for homelessness outreach, 100%. I mean, just the tremendous success of Safe Parking, 12 families already in stable housing. That's amazing. So more of that, certainly well worth all the investment. So great work, and we'll look forward to taking the next steps here.
Okay, Councilmember Zahn, you had your hand up.
Yes, Mayor. I wanted to clarify, so I went back through the notes from the Human Services Commission. And they did vote on the, if there was money available for their dream ask, that the first priority was funding shelter programs. And then the balance of any funds, 50% split with cultural and linguistically specific. with cultural and linguistically specific programs, and 50% for general agencies. And so we can choose to do whatever we want. I'm just wanted to make sure that we are really clear that when they did their deliberations, that's where they would have wanted the $2.5 million to go. So if we make a different choice, that's okay. I just think that what I'm hearing from my colleagues is, it's an additive both and, and I feel like what we're really talking about is, who is more worthy, when the reality is folks that are homeless, experiencing homelessness, needs to have shelter? Because we know that our community really struggles with visible signs of homelessness, and so I think that's something we need to take care of. We absolutely need to take care of our youth from a prevention standpoint, and rental assistance for families. So I am sitting here struggling a little bit with how we both, can we do a both and? Can we honor the focus from the Human Services Commission about where they would want the dream money to go, as well as support the discussion we're having around youth and rental assistance for families? I would say that maybe part of the Memory Bank would be that ask of the, if we did want to try to come up with another, you know, $400,000, $500,000, so that we can do more of a both and, how would we go about doing that? We know that we carry a council contingency. Do we make a choice to use some of that preemptively, because we're doing prevention work? I think those are maybe some of the discussion points we're gonna need to have, because there's so many asks in these last couple of meetings. So I just wanted to make sure that we lift that into the room, because I'm the liaison to human services, and that's what they talked about.
That makes me happy. I think that's like a really good use of the council contingency, and I would like staff to weigh in on that. When I look at the budget and I think about the Human Service Commission's priorities, I see more funding going to homelessness than I've ever seen. So I feel like we've already shifted in that direction with this budget, but I am very happy. I thank you for your support of my proposal, and I support looking into what we could do to add the funds to, to make it an and, not an or. Okay, I'm gonna go through the list as we did, so that's me. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Newenhouse if he has any additional. No? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, a couple of things. I agree with both of you on this particular issue, and I think we should do that on the On the cross-cultural center, one thing we need to get out is, what is in the budget? It's not budgeted, we're not budgeting to build this, the building. We're budgeting to, and the amount is, you know, it's different. I mean, we've been talking about it as if some people have the idea, we've already agreed, the council's voted to have a building, and build a building. So we just need to get straight on that, and I'm just, I have a viewpoint that I think is based on, is solid as to what would happen, but I could be wrong, but I just don't want to, I don't like hearing that, well, we're doing something that, that we really haven't come to conclusion on. And I would like nothing better to see that what is, what is the best is what we should do. And I just, so I, that's, I just want to get that clarified. I'm not saying if.
Michael, do you want to clarify it now, or do you want to wait, bring it back later?
Why don't we bring it back? We'll take a look at the previous studies and.
Okay.
Yeah. The other citing work that's been done.
Okay, we'll look forward to getting clarity on that. Is that it?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, if you come up with the data and everything, that's fine with me. I just, I want to get the best solution, and I think we're, we've just gotten into a, well, this is what, only the way we do it, and that's all. I'm open, so let's work on it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
That's clarified. Once and for all, as far as I remember, as far as I proposed, as far as the council acted, that is what we're looking at. We are going, the study proved, the last study we proved that we approved this project, is that the consultant, take a look, and come up with preliminary design, said this is what it takes, and this is the process we're gonna do. That's what the staff is implementing.
Dr. Whitehead, do you want to respond to that?
The feasibility of doing it.
The last direction that we got from council was to look at programming and then to look at the site, the need for a site. So that's where we are. The cross-cultural project, this pilot program, ends May 2025. We have additional, we're asking for additional funding for one more year of the pilot program, while we will simultaneously look at programming and site analysis. So that's the last direction that we received from council.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor, anything else?
Just one question for Memory Bank. The equation that you guys have for the human services has 1%, I don't know, there was population and the inflation. The demographic is not there. Can we make that equation fancier, that if a demographic of the city changed, we address that in our amazing equation that is very mathematically, I am sure, correct?
We'll put that in the memory bank. Thank you.
So the, they said there's an equation based on the growth of population and inflation, that they budgeted $9 million for human services. Am I correct? Am I repeating it?
It is adjusted each year, funding available, based on inflation plus a 1% population growth factor.
I think the demographic of the city is important, too, and I don't know how you're going to mathematically put that in an equation.
Yes, I would like to see how they do that. Let me, let me let Councilmember Hamilton, if he has anything else to say.
Nothing further, Commissioner.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. John, this question for you, from the Memory Bank. I remember Councilmember Lee asked a question about council resources, but I do not see it in the Memory Bank, so if you could take a look at that or get together, Councilmember Lee, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, I have to say that next week, we're having a special meeting. It's special only because we usually don't have a meeting on the last Tuesday of the month, but we are having one. It's not special material, it's just regular council meeting. So we will see you all back here next Tuesday, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.